Okay, we'll now reconvene. The meeting is back in session. We're moving on to item number 13. This is a joint item codocated by Supervisor Desmond and Sheriff Kelly Martinez. So Supervisor Desmond, would you like to say any introductory remarks?
Not really. Just this item is advocating for funding for Proposition 36 implementation. And I've got some comments after we hear from the public. And I know Sheriff also has a few words as well.
Would you like to come up? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for having me here. Chairwoman, Vice Chair, and Supervisors. Just wanted to briefly touch on this item. I think it's really important that we properly fund Proposition 36. It obviously passed by a majority of the voters. Right now, implementation has been very expensive. It's going to be very expensive for this county. And I really think that we should advocate at the state level for some state funding for this proposition. The sheriff's role in this implementation is that Proposition 36 created and turned some misdemeanors into felonies, which makes them now bookable. So we've had about 3,300 people booked in the county jails under Prop 36. We need to take care of those individuals while they're in our custody. We're keeping about 500 persons a day extra in our custody since last December. Their average length of stay is about 26 days, and I think you've been provided with a dashboard. That's publicly available on our website, and it's kept up to date every day. So anytime you want to take a look at what's impacting the county's jails. It's also impacting, I know, our other justice partners, the district attorney, probation, public defender, and behavioral health. So I'm a strong supporter of advocating at the state level, and I hope you'll support this board item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 13 requests to speak on this item, three in person and 10 requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received five ecomments, three in support, one in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 13 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you'll have one minute to address the board. I'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record, and I'll be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, allegedly Audra, Caesar Javier, and Mark.
Mark, Prop 36 makes simple drug possession a felony, costing taxpayers billions in incarceration without reducing crime. The measure is also so poorly drafted that it will simply create confusion in the courts and not lead to higher penalties in many retail theft cases. So, but what's causing crime? And that's, this is something that all the agenda items here just about have in common, is everybody out there needs to see this. The supervisors will never do anything about it, you supervisors. So this is, like I said, I'm see it from 60, excuse me, 6 minutes 40 seconds to 24 minutes to understand the Federal Reserve, how it causes inflation, which of course destroys the economy intentionally. See this to see the wealth inequality and the difference between now and 1955 and the wealth distribution curve. See this. These are YouTube titles. See Rosa Corey from 3 minutes 30 seconds. Very important. There are some times. 5 minutes 28 seconds.
Thank you. Your time is up. As next speaker is coming forward, I'd also like to invite forward Patricia Mondragon.
Unfortunately, on the surface, this looks good. It looks like you guys are really want to help people, but the problem is, is this is a business, as just like any other human exploitation that you guys do. It is, you know, profitable to put people in like diversion programs, give them behavioral health, you know, therapy or whatever, put them on some more meds. You know, we encourage people to do drugs in the county of San Diego by giving them pipes and needles and Narcan in case they overdose. But it's like, this is just another human industrial complex agenda. And it's really sad because these people get thrown into the system just so that they can stay in there. And it's a perpetual state of chaos that happens, but it's very lucrative for those that pretend to help. You know, the government is intentionally inept. And so then you guys can make excuses to why things happen, but it's sad because you exploit people in the process.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Patricia Mondragon with Alliance San Diego. We want to express our opposition to this item that prioritizes the implementation of Proposition 36. While Prop 36 did pass, many of its provisions are discretionary. They are not required. Right now, our county and state is facing major cuts to essential programs to provide food, housing, and health services. Families are struggling to meet basic needs, and we are losing millions more in critical social funding. This is not the time to divert limited state and county resources towards expanding incarceration. The district attorney already has discretion in charging and sentencing, which can mitigate costs to the county without additional funding. We urge you to prioritize investments that keep our communities healthy and housed, not policies that deepen inequalities and strain county resources even further. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with our first caller.
Now that you have effectively defunded the police by using my, the use of money they need elsewhere, I guess we do need to find an alternative funding source. And yeah, some of the stuff they, now they include in Prop 36 might be a bit on the, you know, a bit on, um, a bit unnecessary, like drug offenses, but you know, that's good. It's better to incarcerate real criminals. But shame on the state if the people voted directly to change the way it operates. That means it should include funding. Maybe you should fund another letter. I think that the county should also.
Now hear from the next caller.
Sheriff, why is it that Newscom has refused to accept the will of the voters? Why did Santa Monica whine loudly against Prop 36 when it was exactly what the majority of Californians wanted? A reduction in any level of homelessness, theft, and drug addiction. Although ironically, Prop 36 is still a soft-on-crime joke. Getting three chances to steal and treatment in lieu of an earned felony is nothing. But the state criminals love encouraging crime. This is very similar as to the bill that forced local county jails to take the worst criminals that should be in the state prisons. Against the California constitution, the state dictators want to simultaneously take away local control with constant mandates, but don't want to fund anything that the people actually need, only what they shouldn't, like taxpayer-funded safari vacations for the corrupt insurance commissioner, Ricardo Lara. So yes, the state needs to do its job and fund the protection of citizens instead of protecting the criminals. Unfortunately, the root cause of criminal behavior are state crazies like Newscom, Pervert Scott Wiener, Nut Job Nancy, Bonehead Bonta, Shady Shannon Grove, and many, many more. They should all be locked up. Lots and lots of funding for that, please.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
And first, I want to thank everyone for their service. I know it's not easy, but I just felt compelled to speak because I was a homeless woman here in North County, Oceanside. I grew up here since 88 and was homeless back in, I guess, 2019 up until maybe 2022. And different things, I just felt compelled to speak, just being on the streets, and that one of the things is that it emphasizes those, there's not everyone that steals and does all those things, but the ones that do, they will hurt others that are homeless for whatever different reasons, who do try to keep the streets safe. And when you don't go hard on crime with those that are victimizing other homeless ones who are peaceful, then you're really causing it harder for those that want to come out of homeless to come out of homelessness. So we do have a lot of street heroes who do stand for women and not, and keep them from getting raped. We have a word on the street here in Oceanside that says, we have two rules.
Now hear from the next caller.
Anyways, from Swallow here, item 13 highlights how flawed our system really is. Diverting funds away from police programs leaves the county scrambling for alternatives while taxpayers foot the bill once again, robbing Peter to pay Paul. That's reckless governance in action. Proposition 36 reduces jail costs and increases safety, yet funding was not prioritized. This is another Band-Aid approach, patching gaps instead of creating real lasting solutions. The system keeps shuffling money and responsibility while real solutions, prevention, rehabilitation, and public safety remain secondary. It's time to see the truth. The cycle benefits no one but the system itself, and the people always pay the price. Okay? Yes, they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll now hear from the final caller.
I am a district representative for California State Senator Catherine Blakespear, who has made public safety one of her priorities since first elected in 2022. Last year, Senator Blakespear was a leading voice in securing $100 million alongside her Senate Democratic colleagues. And this fall, the senator is convening a law enforcement roundtable in coordination with the county sheriff, the district attorney, and other law enforcement leaders in San Diego and Orange Counties to discuss advocacy around Prop 36. She's committed to continuing engaging with the governor's office and stakeholders to advocate for increased funding of Prop 36 implementation. Our office wants to hear your funding priorities, so please email us at senator.bakespear@senate.ca.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, I'll return to Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. I also want to thank Sheriff Martinez for partnering with me to advocate for funding to implement Prop 36. It's already been stated, in 2024, the voters passed the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Reduction Act, Prop 36, by an overwhelming majority of 68%. San Diego County voters passed it by 65%. Prop 36 aims to reduce crime and support rehabilitation and address addiction and theft through treatment rather than repeated jail time. For many low-level chronic offenders, they need mental health or substance use treatment rather than cycling through the justice system. And as was mentioned, the state legislature did include one-time funding in the budget for behavioral health, the trial courts, and public defenders. However, they have not provided funding for in-custody behavioral health, substance abuse, or rehabilitative program, despite the fact that our local jails unfortunately are our biggest mental health providers. So most importantly, we need more ongoing funding. As the sheriff stated, we have over 500 people a day, and an increase due to Proposition 36, but we're not getting any funding from the state. And our sheriff wants to do her job, but she can't without this funding. The voters supported Prop 36 because they were tired of seeing no consequences for people committing crimes. And we should all agree that for many, the answer is treatment. We want to get people into treatment and less jail. And if they're in jail, they should be able to get the mental health treatment that they need. For those reasons, I urge my colleagues to support the item. With that, I'll make a motion to support the county of San Diego advocating for funding Proposition 36 implementation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Gary.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank the sheriff for being here and for elevating the operational and clinical pressures that Prop 36 has created inside our facilities. We all understand the reality. Prop 36 fundamentally shifted the way counties respond to substance use and low-level offenses. Now, it is our responsibility to make sure we implement it in a way that reflects compassionate treatment and a vision for public safety grounded in prevention and community strength. For many individuals who cycle through custody, the jail is their first and sometimes only point of medical or behavioral health contact. Ensuring we have the capacity to stabilize people while they are in custody is essential to public safety, recovery, and to successful reentry. The sheriff's office has a duty to provide care inside, and we recognize the real-world constraints they face as they take on this new treatment responsibility. I want to be clear, in-custody care alone cannot be our strategy. Treatment shouldn't begin only after someone enters custody, and it shouldn't end when someone leaves. True rehabilitation and long-term safety come from strengthening recovery pathways in the community connected to family, housing, peer support, and long-term behavioral health treatment. So this is about building a bridge, not a bottleneck, between custody and community. We need stabilization inside, warm handoffs at release, and ongoing care outside of custody as well, so individuals don't fall through the cracks and return to the system. So with that, I'd like to propose an amendment that Clark is going to pull up right now. If we want to reduce recidivism and ensure meaningful alternatives to incarceration, then we must invest not only in in-custody treatment, but also in expanding behavioral health funding and strengthening legal equity and defense services. The public defender's office plays a critical role in connecting individuals to treatment pathways, helping them understand their rights, and ensuring due process access to diversion and community-based services. Early effective counsel is one of the strongest tools we have to support treatment, reduce recidivism, and build a justice system rooted in fairness and accountability. So my amendment affirms the need to support the sheriff, which is very important, providing in-care custody, but also we would direct the state to secure funding to also bolster the public defender's capacity to connect individuals with treatment, case management, and reentry services. This is an opportunity for our public safety and our community health systems to work collaboratively, effectively, and with purpose. We can prioritize safety and rehabilitation at the same time, and we can honor the will of the voters through the proposition while still shaping implementation as a way that it reflects our commitment to healthier communities where people have the support to recover, rebuild, and thrive. So my proposed amendment on the floor would add language to identify and pursue state funding to support law enforcement efforts and expand access to behavioral health and substance use treatment services under Proposition 36, including investments in treatment, infrastructure, housing, case management, and reentry supports. This should include resources for system partners such as public defender's office to ensure early legal representation, case management, and peer navigation to support sustained recovery and stability after exiting the justice system.
Okay, thank you very much. I sound like an amendment?
Happily accept.
Okay, so that was a friendly amendment, and Supervisor Desmond's happy to accept the amendment. Do we have a second to the motion that's on the floor? The motion by Supervisor Desmond to move his item that includes the amendment. Did you want to second it, Supervisor Anderson, or Supervisor Gary?
No, no.
Oh, I thought you wanted to second it.
No, no, no.
Then I'll second it with.
I will, no.
Okay. Okay, well, we still don't have a second, so anyone have any additional comments? Supervisor Montgomery-Stef.
Thank you so much. Just want to thank the supervisor and sheriff for bringing this item forward. I want to reiterate what I was very clear about, that I did not support Prop 36, and this was certainly one of the reasons why we did get reports that, the type of impacts that it would have on our county resources. That being said, it did go through an appropriate and fair process, and although I think it was, I won't go there. I think I've talked too much today about my opinions about misinformation, but at the end of the day, it passed, and there is a burden to the county. And so as we've been discussing this entire day about additional burdens that are put on the county and what we can do to try to fill those gaps, I will be supportive of this item, particularly with the amendment. I just want to go on the record also, though, and say that I think that we should divert more funding to behavioral health functions as opposed to law enforcement only. So I want to make sure that is clear, but I will support this today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll just make a quick comment. I think when we get mandates coming from Sacramento, whether it's because of the legislature or because of the voters, and then these put huge new strains on our county, that's a real problem. So I do appreciate that we need to be advocating for the funding that's required in order to implement Prop 36, which I did not support at the time, in large part because I was concerned about the really significant pressure it would put on our ability to serve our community. So I think we do need to be fighting for these funds. And I just want to kind of center that whenever I talk to people in my community about why they were supporting Prop 36, it was really about how we do a better job of getting people the behavioral health rehabilitation that they need. And I want to make sure that that is something we continue to focus on. And I know that our sheriff has, have been trying really hard to expand those treatment services in all sorts of different ways within our facilities, and so just kind of continue to center that in our work. So thank you very much. With that, we can take a vote.
Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all Supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you all very much. So we're moving on to item 14, enhancing homeless support through expanded withdrawal management service access. I don't have a note on whose item that is. It's yours. Okay, great. It's the vice chair's, it isn't mine. Okay. Who would like to introduce that?
I can move, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Homelessness and substance use disorder remain at crisis levels in San Diego County. Nearly 10,000 people sleep without shelter each night, and last year alone, 293 of our neighbors died from drug or alcohol-related causes. It's heartbreaking, it's a heartbreaking reality, but it's also an opportunity to change course to build a system that saves lives instead of losing them. The people paying the price are our most vulnerable residents, those ready to take the first step toward recovery but with nowhere to go. With only two withdrawal management beds, often referred to as detox beds, in District 1, too many are left waiting in hospital hallways or struggling alone on the streets. The problem isn't a lack of compassion, it's a lack of urgency. For years, the process has been too slow, bogged down by red tape and bureaucracy while people suffer. During my campaign, I heard it over and over again, we need these beds and we need them now. That's why today's action matters. We're expanding withdrawal management services by adding 44 new withdrawal management treatment beds downtown, enough to help 2,700 people each year safely begin recovery, reconnect with care, and take the next step toward housing instability. Withdrawal management provides supportive, comforting care for individuals experiencing withdrawal symptoms as they stop using addictive substances. Withdrawal management is often the first step in the substance use recovery process and serves as a bridge between crisis and stability. These services also help individuals safely transition into long-term treatment, such as counseling, medication-assisted recovery, and help connect individuals to need very much-needed housing support. Taking this action today is how we keep our promise to move faster, cut through the red tape, and deliver results. This is what leadership in action looks like, not waiting for the system to catch up, but driving it forward and delivering vital services for our neighbors in their time of greatest need. Thank you, Supervisor Montgomery-Stef, for your partnership on this item. I want to also extend an additional gratitude, Vice Chair, for the great work you and your team did in District 1 while we were without representation earlier this year. So I really want to thank you for those efforts and for your partnership on this item.
Thank you so much, Chair Protim. Chair, thank you for the time to speak. It certainly was an honor to serve in that capacity around the homeless resource fairs and such, so thank you for saying that. With regard to this item, we know that addiction doesn't stop at district boundaries. It's a county-wide challenge that demands resources where It's a county-wide challenge that demands resources where the need is greatest. We know that where those concentrations are, and we must put services close to the people that need them. We also know that unstable housing is a major risk factor for substance use, especially for those trying to cope with difficult circumstances. That is why these services must also be accessible to our Medi-Cal population, which includes all of our unhoused community. This item accomplishes both of those goals, expanding care where it's most needed and ensuring equitable access for those who rely on our safety net. Supervisor, I applaud your leadership on this effort, and I'm proud to support you in making this a reality. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now go to public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson-Remer. We have 15 requests to speak on this item, six in person, and nine requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received 12 ecomments, nine in support, one in opposition, and one neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 14 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Again, because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you'll have one minute to address the board, and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'll be calling you groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward allegedly Audra, Cesar Javier, and Mark.
Domestic terrorism is off the charts in San Diego. Psychopaths in charge, leading the way to destroy more people by medicating them. I think you guys all should be medicated. We should use Prop 36 on you guys. It's interesting, I'm wondering when we're going to stop incentivizing drug use by engaging with NGOs that, to all the homeless shelters, bring pipes and needles for them to use drugs, right? And they even have test strips for fentanyl. And then, you know, down at Jack in the Box, right by City College, where they also distribute these pipes and needles, you know, there's fentanyl laying on the ground. It's a good little plan that happened, because they went from seeing doctors to give out pain meds to having it go onto the streets, so then you guys can implement all of these things, these little diversion programs and whatnot. It's very lucrative. Good job. You guys are masquerading as angels of light like Satan.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in person, Natalie Raschke, Dr. Megan Parch, and Joshua Bohannon.
Mark, here's a quote, "There are gaps in withdrawal management capacity within the county indicating a potential need for more comprehensive services that includes psychiatric medication management," end quote. So now that you guys have made everyone poor by not stopping the Federal Reserve, you're going to drug them with psychotropic drugs. That's a really bad plan, very evil idea. So people, this board's never going to help you. You need to see Zeitgeist at Denim, this YouTube video, these are all YouTube video titles, from 6 minutes 40 seconds to 24 minutes, to see how the Federal Reserve causes inflation, which has destroyed society. Over the decades, there's been a direct correlation between inflation rising and use of psychotropic drugs. You need to see wealth inequality in America. You need to see this, the CEOs in 1955 made about 25 times as much as their average employee. Now they make 400 times as much. We need to have a healthy middle class, maybe double, all of the poor and middle classes pay and take away the CEOs.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Board of Supervisors, Josh Bohannon with Father Joe's Villages. We are a homeless service provider in the downtown area where most of our homeless population resides. Last year, 300 people living on the streets died from an overdose, and for those who are seeking treatment, who are ready for recovery, the reality is, they can't go into long-term treatment programs until they do the first step, which is detox. That's a requirement. They need to withdraw safely from substances. Most of these facilities are in East County, North County, not where people experiencing homelessness reside. So building out our infrastructure into a location where people currently are and where they exist will help encourage access to treatment, and increasing the access level, the number of beds available to people will help get them into those treatment slots. Instead of waiting for weeks, hopefully, we can move people into the safer, humane, and dignified space to find recovery in that moment, and that will have positive long-term outcomes for this population. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Megan Parch, Chief Health Officer at Father Joe's Villages, where I've worked for the last decade. Every day, I see community members who are struggling with mental health and substance use disorders, individuals who are without adequate access to the services that they need to stabilize and resolve their experience of homelessness. For our social service and healthcare providers, it's debilitating and disheartening to encounter individuals who are ready to engage in treatment, knowing that the resources in our community do not align with their need. We strongly believe that enhanced access to life-saving withdrawal management services can create a pathway out of homelessness for many individuals, those who may otherwise lose their lives on our streets, in our parks, canyons, roadways, in their vehicles, and other spaces that aren't meant for human habitation. Having worked in the field of behavioral health for 20 years, I've seen the many ways lives are transformed when provided access to care, and as a family member of someone with substance use disorder, I personally witnessed firsthand that treatment saves lives, rebuilds relationships, and sends a purpose, and has positive impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Natalie Raschke. Again, if we want to get to the root of issues and problems, wasn't it the federal government that dumped crack cocaine into neighborhoods, gave natives alcohol? They deserve these beds. If we're going to get to the root of problems, then we have to acknowledge where it all started. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller. And that caller hung up. We'll now move on to the next caller.
We want to thank the board for addressing the shortage of detox beds in the region. It is incomprehensible. There are only four beds in downtown San Diego now, so the addition of 44 beds would be a much-needed resource. The availability of these beds is critical for our team members when participants reach out wanting to get sober. As you and everybody in this room knows, the decision to get sober can be very difficult and is almost always preceded by one or more traumatic events, otherwise known as rock bottom, so we take it very seriously. One participant says they are ready. Time is of the essence, and we eagerly welcome these detox beds so we're able to act on those opportunities. I urge you to continue to grow capacity across the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
District 1 and proposes more beds than District 4, mostly ignoring where the problem is most severe. Why provide services where it's convenient rather than where it's needed? And again, there are services that should be withdrawn, like the mismanaged ones at Troy Street in Lemon Grove. Instead, real solutions should be prioritized, and, let me just get to where the bottom, 60 seconds, right? Yeah. So there's been a lot of solutions proposed to this board, and yet they continue to ignore the people. Yet this board continues to favor Band-Aid, Band-Aid, Band-Aid programs. Take a drink every time you hear me say Band-Aid. Temporary scattered shelters, funding expansions that offer no long-term benefit, patching problems rather than solving them. This government, in a nutshell, will continue to point out the obvious until it changes. Until the system itself is burnt to a crisp, I will continue to point it out. Until the people wake the hell up and are done with being exploited, taken advantage of, and supr-
Thank you. Now I hear from the next caller.
But withdrawal from drugs is a good thing. Withdrawing services is usually a bad thing, especially for veterans and so are veterans and pretty much everyone else, after all the equity crap you spouted. In this item, I don't know what the board letter mentions, but there are only four withdrawal management service beds in District 1, but then advocates for more dedicated beds in San Diego, which is mostly District 4. Let's put the beds where the problem is. Provide service where it's needed. That's basically what the silly equity statement says and what you just said. Yet the authors of this scheme would go against what they wrote. But there are services which you should withdraw, services at Troy Street and Lemon Grove. You should establish a concrete shelter like Sunbury Ranch, and a piece of all that land you own. I'm sure that the plants and animals want mine. My original-
You hear from the next caller.
Something more hypocritical and fake than Manuela introducing an item about homelessness when she literally crossed her fingers at the giggling clown, Matthew Leva Gonzalez, wishing for me to be homeless. That's on video. So I support these $4.4 million BHS programs if it means that Manuela will get the mental and behavioral health service she is obviously in dire need of. And for the alleged detox programs, I think those who have suspiciously worn sunglasses during public meetings like Kara could benefit from these programs if they actually worked and were not crime-ridden call monsters like Windsor Point and Carlsbad is. These are nothing but jail cells with windows where county-funded crazies shoot up inmates with a 24-hour supply of drugs. Why does the item whine about a lack of these drug beds in District 1 but then demand more beds only in downtown San Diego? Is this yet another bailout from Monica's corrupt buddies? If this is used downtown as the homeless dumping ground, news flash, it already is. I literally stepped on crack pipes outside of the old San Diego building on B Street because of California policies made to profit off death via their NGO buddies. Enough of the corruption.
Thank you. Now I hear from the final caller.
My name is Becky Rapp, and I support this item as it's critical that we have and can provide more detox beds. But the end goal is rehabilitation, accountability, and recovery, not endless harm reduction programs that hand out supplies but fail to offer a way out. Harm reduction has become a free pass that perpetuates drug use, and it creates an illusion of safety while people continue to use in public spaces, overdose, and spiral deeper into addiction. And as drug use continues, so do the crimes that accompany it, particularly theft. If we truly want safer communities and fewer people cycling through and filling our detox beds, we need to invest in treatment that restores lives, not programs that enable dependency. Please advocate for sustainable funding that prioritizes treatment, supervision, and recovery, not continued-
You and Chair Lawson-Remer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you all very much. Any of my colleagues have any comments or questions?
I'll move the item.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second, and I'll just add that it's critical that the county continue to expand additional behavioral health services such as intensive outpatient care, partial hospitalization, recuperative care, and of course, long-term residential care. I just want to thank again the vice chair and look forward to partnering with my colleagues in county behavioral health services on continued efforts to optimize behavioral health care, continuum of care in the near future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Well, thanks. I want to thank my colleagues for bringing in the expansion of the withdrawal management services forward. I'm very supportive of increasing the number of detox beds in our county. I think it's the number one first step in rehabilitation, is getting people through detox. People in our streets need treatment, and we have a responsibility to ensure it's available to them, and so the more detox beds, the better. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no further request to comment, please vote.
Chair Lawson-Remer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody. So now we're moving on to item number 15. This is protecting residential rental applicants and tenants from price gouging and fee exploitation. This is a joint item from District 1 and District 4. If someone would like to introduce?
I'll start.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Chair Lawson-Remer, and thank you to Chair Pro-Tim for bringing this item forward with me. So junk fees are the hidden and unfair charges that make housing less affordable and less transparent for thousands of renters throughout our region. These excessive fees include charges for basic services that make homes livable, such as pest control and trash collection. Families are also forced to pay monthly pet fees on top of their rent, further burdening income that is already stretched. Indeed, according to census data released last year, around 30% of county residents spend more than half of their paychecks on housing. Thus, this proposal directs the CAO to work with county council to draft an ordinance for the unincorporated areas of the county with the following. To further transparency, a landlord must disclose the total cost of monthly rent and any fees in addition to rent in their advertising on their website and in any document that lists rental cost. In order to educate renters of their rights, a landlord must include in the rental application educational materials explaining AB 2493, including when a landlord is prohibited from charging an applicant an application screening fee. Where an applicant for a residential rental unit provides their own tenant screening or consumer credit report, the landlord must accept the report and may not charge the applicant an application screening fee. As to holding deposits, landlords may charge an applicant a holding deposit up to 5% of the monthly rent for the unit being held. Holding deposits must be refunded to the applicants when the lease agreement is finalized or if the lease does not move forward or at no fault of the tenant. We are also limiting the junk fees that a landlord may charge to a tenant, just to name a few examples. First, any fees required by local, state, and federal law must be excluded from the cost owed by the tenant. Next, any and all fees required to be paid by the tenant must not exceed 5% of the monthly cost of rent. While landlords may charge late fees for the late payment of rent, this is capped at 2% of the monthly rent. This may not be charged unless rent is overdue by seven days or greater. Also, landlords must apply payments to the tenant to monthly rent before any existing late fees. In addition, landlords may not charge the tenant, to the tenant, any fees for services solicited by a landlord to make the rent unit livable, including but not limited to pest control and trash fees, as I mentioned in the beginning. Neither may a landlord charge a fee for a tenant to own a household pet excluding a refundable pet security deposit. Finally, a landlord may not charge a tenant any fee that is not specified in the rental agreement unless the landlord provides a written notice and the tenant agrees in writing. And so those are the nuts and bolts of this proposal, asking for my colleagues' support, and I will turn it over to Chair Pro-Tim.
Thank you, Vice Chair, for your partnership on this item. Housing searches are an immensely challenging and stressful experience, especially for low-income people. On a daily basis, thousands of working families, seniors, students, and first-time renters struggle to navigate a system full of hidden fees, misleading pricing, and unnecessary barriers. And when you add surprise junk fees for things like key fobs, trash pickup, or online payment portals, the process is not just confusing but can be exploitative. These hidden costs make budgeting nearly impossible, create barriers that keep people from securing stable housing, and erode trust between tenants and landlords. Families who live paycheck to paycheck often plan every dollar carefully, and when the cost of rent suddenly jumps because of surprise add-ons, it can push them into late fees, debt, or even eviction. Predatory practices can force families into impossible choices between paying for rent, food, or health care and perpetuate cycles of poverty. And this harm is not distributed equally. Junk fees and deceptive rental practices disproportionately impact communities of color. Because of longstanding racial inequities in income, credit access, and housing opportunity, Black, Latino, and immigrant households are far more likely to rent than own, and that is a fact. Redlining did exist in this country. In a region already facing a housing affordability crisis, we cannot allow these practices to continue unchecked. This item today is about making the housing search a simpler, more transparent, and humane experience. I want to thank the vice chair again for your partnership, and I look forward to public comment.
Okay, let's go to public comment on this item.
Thank you, Chair Lawson-Remer. We have 29 requests to speak on this item, 15 in person, and 14 requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received 14 e- 14 ecomments, eight in support, four in opposition, and one neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 15 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you'll have one minute to address the board, and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. I will be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, Mohammed Umar, Debra Samuels, and Gilberto Vera. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Muhammad Umar. I'm community organizer with the partnership for the advancement of Native Americans. I'm also here on behalf of CED Coalition for Equitable Development. Housing is a human right and shouldn't be a way to make a profit. Renters are being hit with ridiculous trash, valet, pet, and other surprise fees that make it difficult to make ends meet. With our neighbors living paycheck to paycheck, a single unexpected fee can lead to economic instability and having to choose between basic needs such as accessing healthcare or putting food on the table of their family. This ordinance brings fairness and transparency. It caps extra fees and makes landlords show the true cost of rent. Please vote yes on item 15. Stand with working families, renters, and seniors, and make clear that in San Diego, we protect people, not profits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Deborah Samuel. I'm a leader with San Diego Housing Project. Also, I'm a vice president with the St. Vincent de Paul, where we go and visit people at their house knowingly that they need help for rent. And what we saw is a great concern for us to see and hear that landlords engage in predatory practices like charging excessive fee in addition to the high cost of rent, when families can't even pay initial rent price. Please take in consideration that low-income and non-English-speaking also are more likely to pay excessive fees in addition to the rent and acts by landlord. If not, they cannot risk getting evicted. Everyone deserves a dignified place to call home that they can afford, because home are sacred. Vote in favor of the ordinance 15.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite three additional speakers, allegedly Audra, Rudy, and Dale McIneney.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Gil Vera. I'm the director of the Housing Justice Collaborative at Legal Aid Society San Diego, and I strongly support the proposed ordinance to protect renters from excessive fees and price gouging. Thank you, supervisors, Montgomery, Step, and Aguirre for bringing this forward to chambers. San Diego County is facing a housing affordability crisis, with rents rising over 50% since 2018 and thousands of low-income families unable to access affordable housing. Hidden fees like excessive late fees, trash valet, and pest control fees make it even harder for renters to secure stable housing and disproportionately impact low-income communities and communities of color. This ordinance will bring much-needed transparency, limit exploitative fees, and also ensure renters know the true cost of housing upfront. It empowers tenants with remedies if a landlord violates the protections. By strengthening the tenant rights and increasing housing opportunities, we take a vital step towards equity, justice, and economic stability for all of San Diegans. I urge you to pass this ordinance to help make housing fair and more accessible to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello again. This is Rudy. I'm a county employee, and like most people, I also rent. Once, I actually did ask my landlord if it'd be possible to keep the rent the same for my next year, and they actually reminded me they could raise my rent 10%, but instead they would give me a 5% raise because they were losing money on me otherwise. So there's a clear power imbalance between renters and rentees, and this item is a step in the right direction that can help tilt the scales to help people who are just looking for somewhere to sleep that isn't outside, because you can't even sleep on a park bench. As long as there is money to be made from having additional properties, the longer we will deal with difficulties in housing people, which is also an extra cost to the county because we work to help unpowise people as well. We urge you to vote yes on this item because without more regulation on what is unfortunately another business, people can and will take advantage of others, as there is too much passive income to be made from people who always need a roof over their head. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Dale McIneney, and I am a constituent of Supervisor Paloma Aguirre. I'm here to speak in favor of banning hidden exploitative fees. For large parts of high school, I was homeless due to San Diego's unaffordable rent. And years later, I still watched my friends and family struggle to make ends meet. I've been extremely fortunate to attend college and grad school in New York City and Ireland, and exploring more the world taught me that, to an extent, our cost of living crisis here is a policy choice. Banning these fees is one crucial step towards making everyone's lives easier in this county, and I urge every supervisor in front of me to vote yes.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite additional speakers, Caesar Javier, Mark, Victoria Carrillo, and Natalie Rashke.
Typical narcissist sitting here talking about predatory practices when you guys are the predators engaging in that kind of stuff. And it's interesting because it's always about pitting people against each other when, you know, yeah, some people actually own homes to have a business, so it's like demonizing that. But you guys don't take into consideration things like the cities implementing new trash fees, new taxes, new all of this that goes down the pipe on down to the renter, because you can't expect the landlord to have to absorb all of those costs and then act like it's predatory to ask for full-cost recovery. You guys do it all the time. In fact, we pay exorbitant amounts of money to do that, but yet we're demonizing people. You should be going after the big people, the big companies that do this, like BlackRock. They do exploit, but there are mom and pops who are trying to make ends meet, and they will have their home taken if they can't get this cost recovery back. So it's a double-edged sword. It's catch-22.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Victoria Carrillo. I'm a proud SEIU Local 221 Union member and county employee with the Housing and Community Development Services Department. We are urging you to vote yes on this ordinance and agenda item 15 today. This policy protects renters, especially those from vulnerable populations that I work with on a day-to-day basis, from unfair fees and gives them a chance to stay housed. We need more transparency in what is being charged and why it's being charged in order to prevent increased homelessness and redlining in our community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mark, Monica, I'd like to think that you didn't notice this, and you'll correct it. Reusable tenant screening reports. Where an applicant for a residential rental unit provides their own tenant screening or consumer credit report, the landlords are required to accept the report and may not charge the applicant for an application fee. There are different levels of screening reports, and also, it could be an old outdated one. You are not addressing that. Also, the landlord would usually only screen the person who they're about to rent to. So this isn't a big deal. They're about $47 for a top-quality report. Otherwise, someone can just Photoshop and make up anything they want. Usually, the landlord would get it as an email from the online company and know that it's credible. But you've gotten rid of all that. That's truly evil, and that's unacceptable. I'd like to think that you hear what I'm saying, and you're going to change that. Also, are the trash fees included or exempt?
Thank you.
My understanding from what
Thank you, Mark. Your time is up. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite three additional speakers, Erin Suramoto-Grossi, Patricia Mondragon, and Janika Faulkner.
Hi, Natalie Rashke. I'm currently living this big-business nightmare in apartment complex. I live under Irvine Company. A three-bedroom, two-bath apartment in Mission Valley is $4,480. That's not including utilities. Conservis does my utilities. They send me a bill, and I can't pay Conservis. I have to pay Irvine Company. So even though Conservis gives me a bill, I can't pay them. I have to pay Irvine Company. But if I pay it separate, I get a late fee. I can't pay it separate. So I'm getting, and then I'm getting charged for this bill. I pay $112 a month in trash. We live in a 670 apartment unit complex. If you do the math, $68,000 a month they're getting in trash. What it costs them a year, if you do the math, anywhere from 65 to 100, that's including recycling, 119,000
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Erin Suramoto-Grossi, Associate Director of Alliance San Diego. I want to thank the Chair Protem and the Vice Chair for bringing this forward and listening to community members. We are in strong support of this item. Many of our own team members are either directly impacted by rental junk fees or have been impacted in the past, myself included. Before we purchased our condo, my husband and I rented a unit in University Heights. The rental agreement included the use of the unit as well as the use of a garage. After about three years, the landlord decided that he could make more money by charging separately for the garage and began to charge us $300 a month for the garage, even though this violated our rental agreement. At the time, this increased our housing costs by more than 25%. Because it was not included as considered rent, we didn't get any additional noticing, such as 60-day notice. They never updated our lease agreement. We weren't in a position to move, so we ended up paying for it. So my story is not unique. We urge the Board of Supervisors to move this proposal forward to protect others from predatory practices.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. I'm Janika, and I'm here today on behalf of Alliance San Diego to support the ordinance prohibiting rental price gouging and fee exploitation. After I signed my lease, my landlord started charging me an additional $100 monthly fee that wasn't listed on my lease. I pay that extra fee for trash water and sewage at a place that we had to fight just to get a new water heater after not having water three separate times in one week, or hot water three separate times in one week. I strongly encourage you all to vote yes for transparency so residents are not ambushed by hidden fees. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite the remaining speakers in person, Jessie Schmitty and Melanie Woods.
Good afternoon, Patricia Mondragon. I'm a lifelong renter here in San Diego. Homeownership is just out of reach. In my last home, a duplex in City Heights, both units shared one water meter. We were told we'd be billed based on usage, but the charges were unusually high. We were not given the actual water bill, only an amount to be paid on our payment portal. After talking with our neighbors, we learned we were being overcharged even for water used in common areas and a spout in the public alley that we could not shut off. When we raised our concerns, we were told we would pay more because our unit was bigger. Then, when our lease ended, we got a notice to vacate. It felt like retaliation, simply for asking questions. Renters are facing skyrocketing costs and retaliation. The hikes are justified by the claim that the market can bear it, but the market can't bear it. We are in a housing and homelessness crisis because housing has been treated as a commodity, not a human right. Please vote yes.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jessie Schmitty, State Policy Manager for Alliance San Diego and co-convenor for the Coalition for Equitable Development. Today's ordinance is about more than fees. It's about fairness. It's about making sure that housing policy in San Diego puts people first. Every hidden charge is just another barrier for hard-working San Diego families trying to stay afloat in an already unaffordable city. We are likely to hear our opponents on the other side say that this ordinance is unfair burdensome to an over-regulated industry and that we should wait to let state legislation play out. Well, the legislature is just as tired as we are, which is why they have given you all these tools to use today. For many households, these junk fees are the difference between stability and homelessness. The framework of this ordinance helps even the playing field by ensuring renters know exactly what they're paying for and why. We aren't asking for a handout. We aren't even asking for a handup. We're asking for a chance, a chance for our families and communities to thrive in America's finest city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Board. I'm Melanie Woods with the California Apartment Association. Last month, this board voted to establish a committee to explore revenue opportunities. Against that backdrop, you'd like to limit a housing provider's ability to charge a fee for service. With the legislature still debating these policy areas, it's premature for the county to move forward. The ordinance before you today is in reality for separate and complex policy issues, each with their own operational, legal, and economic implications: screening fees, holding deposits, regulation of fees and transparency. Combining them oversimplifies the critical distinctions and risks unintended consequences. We ask that stakeholders be a part of these highly technical conversations. The overregulation of fees will actually result in less transparency. This ordinance undermines an owner's ability to recover legitimate operational expenses, and the message is clear. San Diego is now a high-risk place to be a housing provider.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with our first caller.
I want to talk about all these fees. You went ahead and did a research paper basically explaining how much money we have disposable income and how much you could take of it. That was done back in 2021. Prices increased. That time you are It is not that difficult to go ahead and reduce our prices. Stop giving benefits to migrants over the United States citizen. Stop enforcing the rules that we've had forever. But no, you want to go ahead and do this because the people that elected you are more than willing to steam open envelopes, switch the contents, and mail them in. And you guys are complicit in that activity. Completely and utterly complicit in that activity. Also, registration fraud, which you could go ahead and take a look at the Heritage Foundation to prove that NGOs are doing it. What I've been telling you the entire friggin' time that you refuse to listen. Yes, 50 is going to pass because those assholes are going to steal your vote.
Thank you. Testing the mics again. Looks like
Okay, testing. Okay, we've got it fixed. Thank you, Ebony.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Molly Kirkland with the Southern California Rental Housing Association. You have our letter. It's long, so I'll be brief. But this letter highlights how complicated these issues are. In some cases, state law exists or best practices. In others, there's case law or cases pending, and some newer laws need clarification on their applicability to rental housing. We also expect state legislation return in 2026 to address fees and more. Housing providers have no issues with transparency. We can all agree that renters should understand what they have to pay or can opt into. How we accomplish this is what needs to be discussed because this isn't a proposal about transparency. It's more regulation. Regulation drives up the cost of housing. So we take this seriously for housing providers and renters. It's too bad rental housing providers weren't contacted in advance about this item. These proposals are complicated, need thoughtful input from all parties, and we hope this happens before the drafting stage. As always, we remain committed to stakeholder involvement for the betterment of the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
I have to point out how that 300 pay for a garage is usually due to the domino effect of what local and state government demands of the owners themselves. And most here won't understand that fact and will continue to beg and defend the same government that burdens us with all of it. So, okay, this item today is about protecting predators like government. While the intent to protect tenants While the intent to protect tenants is understandable, we must not ignore the impact of small landlords, the families who have worked their entire lives to provide homes and earn a living. Instead of protecting the people who built and sacrificed these policies, often end up protecting squatters while penalizing responsible owners. This is another example of government overreach punishing those who have done the hard work while big predator landlords continue to exploit loopholes and provide little, truly unaffordable housing. Too often, regulations target responsible property owners instead of the ones actually causing harm. Here again, we see the government putting its slimy hands on what have.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Kudos to responsible landlords, but greedy landlords jack up the rents and provide little housing for truly low-income people. Then many of them also charge fees for extras which should be included in the rental unit. And usually, government lets them get away with it, like increased rental caps or decreased proportions of low-income housing. Money, money, money for all those guys, but not the ones they serve. While all education and new resolution is good, I hope it doesn't result in excess costs for smaller landlords, as I've heard in city council meetings. That landlords can get away with building only 5% or 10% of the units for truly low-income 30% AMI.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Is this junk item copy-paster from terrorist Sean ALO? Again, there's nothing worse than the fakest of the fake, pretending they care about renters. Let me cross my fingers now in hopes that privileged Manuela will one day actually know what it's like to be a regular person renter rather than owning two homes in two different cities and collecting $21,500 from the same union slumlord Alliance San Diego got money from. How could anyone dare believe anything she says when she wants renters to be homeless? Her so-called tenant protections have harmed the rental market along with gentrifying stacking packs. Calling these junk fees does not negate their value to the property owner. They wouldn't require so many fees that the state would stop enabling squatters. Forcing an owner to end pet rent may stop some owners from accepting animals at all. Forcing an owner to accept an unknown credit report and screening, how would an owner know that the documents are legitimate or up to date? And tell us state's junk housing policies that have only benefited corporate developers and this is pure political theater on the backs of poor renters. It does not make $4,000 plus rent affordable. Get real.
Thank you. On to the next caller.
My name is Noah Yiyik. I'm a researcher and policy advocate for Center on Policy Initiatives and the convenor of the Community Budget Alliance. Housing is a human right, the foundation of stability, safety, and belonging. Yet across our county, renters are hit with junk fees for things like trash, pets, and screenings that push them out of their homes. These aren't small charges. They are the difference between security and eviction, between feeding your kids and covering another surprise fee. And they are the products of a system that has put profit over people for far too long. This ordinance is about fairness and dignity. It says San Diegans deserve transparency, honesty, and housing they can afford. We urge you to vote yes on item 15. Stand with renters, working families, and seniors on fixed incomes, and make it clear that in San Diego County, we protect people, not profits. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Civic Engagement Manager at Alliance San Diego. I think one interesting thing that we've heard today across multiple items is the issue of homelessness come up and how people don't want to see homeless people and how a lot of us don't want to become homeless. And I think this is something that speaks to and can prevent that happening. So I'm urging you to vote yes on item 15 today. Even I myself, you know, when I signed up for my lease in my apartment, I knew that I was going to be paying at least 60% of my income per month to take care of my rent. But over time, I had crazy fees added. Just a month ago, they started adding pet fees, and it's like, excuse me, not pet fees, pest control fees. And it's two of them. This month, I'm going to be paying three separate water fees, one for May, one for April, because some reason it's backtracked, but I'm then going to pay a current water fee, too. So just the way that it isn't transparent in these fees and when people don't know what they're going to pay, that's what leads to people becoming homeless. A lot of us are living check to check, and I think that's not something that we have to guess about. So I urge you all to vote yes on item 15 today. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Hi, I'm She with United Women of East Africa Support Team, and I'm calling because I'm exhausted watching my clients get screwed over by all these fees. For example, I have a low-income client whose landlord wanted $3,800 upfront for the security deposit and on top of the first month's rent. We're talking about $7,600 just to get keys to an apartment she had already qualified for, and the lease was full of vague language about extra fees to cover administrative costs. Nowhere on the lease did it specify, though, the total of the cost of everything she would be paying. I have another client who got a huge bill for sewage and trash fees, even though she's already paid off thousands of dollars, she still owes $5,000 more, and nobody ever told her that these fees existed. She didn't even get a notice that she missed a payment, and now she has to pay all this from the back end. And I think another really awful practice that we need to do away with is landlords using credit scores to screen tenants even though one in four Americans has no credit history at all. None of these practices and policies are neutral, they're designed to be predatory, exclusionary, and they disproportionately harm communities with the least.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
San Diego, big landlords and greedy property management have numerous ways to take advantage of people with different fees. Fees to use common areas like playgrounds or swimming pools that everyone shares. These amenities should be included because the rental price already reflects them. I was a victim to so-called cleaning junk fee when I moved out of my old residence. When I first moved in, my rent was $1,650. When I moved out, my rent jumped up to $2,850. After moving out, it was put on the market for $3,500. I later found out that the HOA was charging me a trash fee the entire time when I was under the assumption that it was included in my rent. I was sent the letter for $1,200 of a cleaning fee and a few months later got back $200 after losing most of my deposit. There's no such thing as an American dream anymore. Nowadays, they build homes just to rent out and not sell. Some property management lists rentals just to collect application fees without the intent to even rent out the unit. If a person could collect $100 to $200 a day.
Thank you. We'll hear from the final caller.
Dear Lina, I'm speaking on behalf of the San Diego Building Industry Association, and I'm here to offer our respectful opposition of the proposed policy before you, as well as ask for additional time to review its various components. As indicated in our letter, we have significant concerns that this proposal does not fully recognize the cost of providing housing in our already high-cost region. We share your concerns about the accessibility of housing, but believe that to truly tackle this problem, we would work together to create an environment where the housing that we all recognize needs to be built can actually come to fruition. As industry leaders, we ask for additional time to work with you on this proposal to address the potential negative impact and to ensure we are not ending up a fall of the Fair Housing Act. To ensure the least amount of confusion or redundancy in this policy, we request a joint working group with the county and the city. Our members appreciate your attention to this issue and look forward to working with you to create more housing. Thank you.
Thank you. And I spoke too soon. We've got one more caller. Thank you.
My name is Lori Piler. I am the CEO of the San Diego Building Industry Association, and Adrianne was just able to deliver our words, and so that's exactly what we wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Rimmer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. I hope my mic is working. So I have a lot of thoughts on this item. Kind of let me just begin with like overall framing. To me, the kind of fundamental situation we find ourselves in, where we have tax cuts for billionaires and no food on the table for working families, and there's people who live in multimillion-dollar mansions and other people are like homeless on our streets, and people are dying because they can't get basic screenings to get treatment in one of, for healthcare, for basic healthcare in one of the richest countries in the world. It's unethical, it's immoral, and I think we have an obligation to do everything we can to rectify these grave injustices. So I kind of approach this from that kind of overarching frame and point of view and starting point. I think there's a lot in here that, in terms of what I understand to be the core intent, I think is completely right. And let me kind of pull out what I think is so important here that was uplifted by my colleagues who wrote this item, but I want to just focus on the pieces that I think are really essential and that I'm really behind. I think first of all, there has been legislation passed at the state level, some at the city level. There's a lot of legislation in the past few years to ensure that rent increases can't exceed more than 5% plus the CPI, the cost of living increase in that given year. So that might be 10% in one year, or 7% or 6% or whatever that cost of living increase was, but that's state law. My view, I think that 5% plus the cost of living is probably too high. I think it should be something more like the cost of, you know, rate of inflation and maybe 3% instead of 5%, something in that vein. That's not what we're here to discuss today, but I just like wanted to put it out as like a frame. One of the things that has happened as a result of what I think is a very good law that allows rents to increase to keep up with the cost of inflation, plus a few percentage points on top, given that there's other rising costs like, you know, trash fees. Sorry, looking at Monica, thinking about the city. But, you know, I think that's like a very good framework. You have to allow some room for landlords to increase, to recoup their investments and keep up with the costs of like repairing their property, but making sure that it's not excessive. What's happened, though, is that because of those caps, some junk fees are being levied and hidden, kind of in order to avoid being restrained by those caps that have been put on, and evading the, I think, very thoughtful intent of the legislation, which I think did a really good job of balancing like multiple needs of multiple parties and renters and, you know, landlords and, you know, really thoughtful work. That's not right, and that's not fair to try to essentially evade the law with junk fees. And in addition to that, the other kind of issue that I think this tackles in a really important way is the issue around transparency. So it's not only that some landlords might be, you know, skirting the limits on rent increases with junk fees. It also, I think a lot of the testimony and the public comment indicated how a lot of these are surprises. You know, I think the person who said, you know, they were, they thought their HOA was included in their rent, and then they got a $1,200 bill. Or like anytime that you go and you sign up and you think you know what you're paying for, and that's not what you're paying for, it's not right. And that's true, I think, not only at the point of signing the lease, it's also important at the point of when you're even looking at which apartments to go visit. Because looking for an apartment's really hard and really time-consuming, and you don't want to go, you know, list an apartment, and someone sees the apartment listed and they go because they think it's in their price range, and they show up and there's like $400 of hidden fees that they didn't know about. So those two aspects, I think, are super central, super important, and I'm 100% on board with that, with all of that intent. I think, I say all this because I think I have more like devil-in-the-details concerns about sort of how this would be implemented and like the specifics. And so I kind of wanted to outline and walk through what I see as some of my concerns, like my more detailed concerns. And then hopefully we can, I don't have like a specific amendment, per se, but hopefully could have a little bit of a conversation with my colleagues who brought this to see if there's a path to kind of take into account my concerns as we move this forward. Okay, so, sorry, there's a lot. I've thought about this a lot, so this is very specific. Okay, the first is, are these like the very, in like a detailed way, exactly the right and correct rules? So like, for example, under junk fees, it says landlords may charge light fees for the rent of up to 2% of monthly rent. This may not be charged unless rent is overdue by seven days or greater. Well, I don't know if those numbers are right. I mean, to be honest, 2% sounds like a lot. What if somebody has a $2,000 rent and then 2%? I don't know. That just sounds like a lot. That sounds like it could be a high number. But on the other hand, seven days might be too long. I don't know, maybe it should be three days. Like, I'm not a, and I say this in all humility, and I bring my own personal experience. I was renting a place from like a retired woman. She rented her like a little unit, and she lived on the other unit. And I was late in paying my rent because I had automatic deposit and it didn't go through. So I was like three days late, and so she didn't have the money she needed in the bank account, and so she was late on paying her mortgage. And so then she got charged like a $180 bill or something like that, which, by the way, she showed me, she said, can you please give me this money because it's your fault? It wasn't a fee that was in the agreement, but guess what? It actually was my fault, and that would have not been allowed under this. And then I, you know, that doesn't seem right to me. So there's just these like little things, like, I don't know, seven days, maybe it's three days, maybe it's two days. I'm not arguing for a thing. I'm just like noting that my own personal experience was in an instance where this woman genuinely did not like got assessed like a big, huge fee from her bank because of my fault and like not paying my rent on time. So that's kind of like an example. Another example of kind of where I'm like not 100% sure I can sign on to the specifics under these, like the very specifics under the junk fees, would be this, like, any fees required by local, state, or federal law must be excluded from the cost owed by the tenant. I just don't know what those are, so maybe that's a good idea, but maybe those aren't. So I feel uncomfortable voting right now to say like definitely do that because I think I just need more, maybe yes, maybe no, I just don't know. So I think that that's like another example. I'll give another example of sort of the devil in the details that I'm just not sure makes sense. Maybe they do, maybe they don't. This is about the pet fee, which is sort of an interesting personal, another personal story. So I was looking for an apartment for about a year, and I couldn't find a place to rent because I had a cat and nobody would rent to me with the cat. And if someone had said to me, hey, you know, we'll rent to you, but you have to pay like a fee for your cat, and it had been like a small fee, I probably would have taken it and thank God I found an apartment. But if it had been a big fee, I would have said like absolutely not, that's insane and like horrible. But at the end of the day, I had to give my cat to my parents because I couldn't even find a place to take my cat. So again, it's just a little bit of like, I don't know, is there maybe, is that the right rule? No fee? Maybe it's a small fee? Maybe it is no fee? Like, I don't know, but there's, which kind of gets me into this other kind of question around, are there potentially unintended consequences with some of the way that these rules are drafted? And I just, I've only identified my like very small, specific stories that are mine, so I feel like there's probably a lot more out there. And I think that that, I got a ton of outreach on this from my district because I, like, although I just want to note, I, this was, this is a big issue for my district because the vast majority of retired individuals in my district are like, their retirement is like one unit. That's how they live. They have one unit, or maybe two units max, but usually it's like one unit in their back of their house. And so they were very worried about this and like, is this going to, you know, what, I'm not saying it will happen, I'm just saying I just don't know. And so I'm kind of concerned about this being really prescriptive as opposed to it being like a starting point for a conversation. So that's like number one. Number two, going into the small mom-and-pop landlord piece. This is an interesting thing because I do think that there's a big difference, and I don't exactly know how you quantify it, but it feels like a really significant difference between a big professional management company or someone who owns like lots of apartments versus someone who has like a couple units, one unit often, but maybe a few. That's, this is, this is just their life savings, and this is how they're like managing to make it through retirement. So then I like, I look at a lot of these, the, what happens a lot of times with a lot of these complicated rules is that you could end up really putting these small mom-and-pop landlords at a real disadvantage because pop landlords at a real disadvantage because they can't keep up, while the big corporate landlords are able to hire like fancy lawyers to write ironclad leases and like do everything perfect by the book, and like evict tenants before the tenants can bring an action. So I don't, I think I'm interested in, is there a mechanism as we go about like this process of tackling this junk fee challenge, of providing some kind of support for mom and pop landlords to know how to comply with the law, to support them, to get into like arbitration, some like differential treatment here in some capacity, where either they get more support on the front end to get trained, because I guarantee you, most of the people who, in my district, who have like a unit, are not going to know once this passes. And so they're not even going to know that they need to comply with these laws. So then you look under remedies, which is a whole bunch of like, you can get injunctive relief, equitable relief, monetary damages, affirmative defense, you know, there's a lot of like legal activity in remedies, but they might not even know that they're violating the law in the first place, and then like the next thing they know that they're in court or like being held up. So that's sort of a, something I would hope we could identify, like, is there either like different standards that apply to like a more like a strict liability standard on corporate landlords and a negligent standard on like mom and pops landlords? So mom and pop landlords, maybe they're supposed to abide by their same rules, but they'd have to be negligent instead of it being strict liability. That's, I think, mostly, sorry for you, Vice Chair Montgomery, I sort of buy the DIA solution on like how do you get different levels of liability, or, and, maybe it's not, and, and maybe there's some kind of way we can support mom and pop landlords to like know how to like write leases that are fair and like figure out how to know what these rules are and give them templates or like whatever that looks like and like support them. Again, not trying to like do all the work on the DIA, but just identifying some of my thoughts. That's number two. Okay. So my number, like, three, kind of goes to this, which was like, how do we put together a process so that we could like address some of these concerns? And I would imagine you guys have thought about that already and would love to hear about it, but I think that if we could have a really good process where we engage with a lot of stakeholders in this kind of creative way, I do think we could probably find some solutions along the way. But I definitely know that some of that work is going to have to be done, because I got a lot of outreach from my, a lot of outreach from, from like small landlords in my community who hadn't been contacted and are unaware of this, and so there was a lot of like misinformation. So I think that's my third point, is how could we set up a process to ensure that people really do know what's going on and have a chance to weigh in and make sure that these kinds of, kind of concerns are taken care of. Okay, my fourth thing is really just kind of, you know, looking at, I know the city is working on something similar, and kind of like, how do we, to the extent that it makes sense to do so, like align with the city's process in developing their ordinance, and not just the process, but also the outcome of like whatever it is. And again, we might actually in the end choose to do something different because we're a different body, but I think it would be very helpful for me, like when this comes back, to be really clear, to say, okay, this is with the process, it was aligned with the city, we all engaged with the same stakeholders, this is what the city ended up with, and if you wanted to adopt this at the county, this is like option A, but maybe we reached a different conclusion, we don't recommend option A, and here's option B, and here's option C. So I can't, I want us to like pre-commit that we have to be completely aligned, but at least having the option of alignment to like reduce confusion feels important. So, I told you, there were a lot of pieces to my feedback. I think my big thing is, I'd like to make sure that this makes like sense in a granular way, because so, this impacts such a huge amount of our housing market, like it's landlords and renters is the vast majority of our housing market, and I think we are tackling, this does tackle like a really important problem, and I just want us to get it right. So, that being said, would like to hopefully have a conversation. Thank you. Superizer Gary.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate your feedback. I failed to move the item in the beginning, so I'm going to do that at this point. I think that your comments are well taken, you know, and I appreciate your very thorough thought process that you've invested in this item, but, you know, I want to, I want to move the, the item as is, and I'll turn over to the Vice Chair.
Yeah, no, I'll go ahead and second that, and I just want to go, I was writing a couple of things as you were going, because I want to just briefly address them, that this is very prescriptive. I do, you know, we have to review an ordinance if that is, if that is accurate, is it a return back, have an opportunity to give input at that time?
Vice Chair Montgomery, Chair Lawson Reimer, yes, that's correct. When it comes back, it would come back for two readings, the first would have an opportunity to make edits, and then the second would be for final consideration.
So I think with that process, that we can have an even deeper conversation, although I know this is prescriptive, this is a very prescriptive board letter, but I do think with the process of an ordinance coming back to us, we'll really be able to dig in at that time to see, to measure potential impacts that you talk about. I think that's the appropriate form for them. What I have found is that, I just want to make sure there's not an opportunity for loopholes, right? Because unfortunately, sometimes some of more vague language often gets exploited in the process, and so I want to make sure, there have been times where we, in another body, we've been able to find some compromise, but I really think, especially at this time, and almost everyone, literally, I was with Councilmember Elo Rivera last week, and one, I won't say the station, but one of the camera folks was like, "I appreciate this because I have to pay valley trash fees, and I told them I'd take my own trash out and they won't let me," right? My point is, with this subject, there are so many personal stories, right? It's not sort of an abstract advocacy point, it's really, really touching so many people. And so I think as we continue to get feedback based on what happens here with this board letter today, that is the opportunity for us to bring that feedback back into the conversation around the ordinance. And then you mentioned the process piece. I think it is important, I think one of the things that I have been mentioning about this board letter in conjunction with what the City of San Diego is doing, is that, you know, there's some kind of symmetry across the region, right? I think that's very important, it cuts down confusion. At the same time, I do think there are other ways, like we can, I'm sure our CAO will be in touch with some of the city folks in her regular meetings to kind of check in on the progress of this. I really want to keep it, you know, keep it as much close to this body as possible. I think that's important, and we have our stakeholders, right, that we have heard from both sides here, that will continue to engage with us, and I think it's appropriate for us to bring that, that analysis back to the conversation. So I would say, just in response.
Can I just, sorry, just, thank you. I just want to kind of get clear, so are you envisioning that part of this process of this coming back will be to look, to get that stakeholder feedback and to kind of figure out, are these the right specifics? And that when we come back with the ordinance, to have some analysis around this, and maybe there's different specifics or additional ones, or kind of that, that is going to emerge in the course of the stakeholder conversations?
I think that the ordinance should certainly include, if this board letter passes today, the ordinance should certainly include the, what, the verbiage that's in this board letter. The way that I envision it is probably because this is kind of a process that I try to do anyway, right? We, we just informally meet with folks who ask, and we take in their input, and we bring it back to the governing process as policymakers, and then make changes if we deem those are necessary at that time. I don't want to, I'm not opposed to having those outreach kind of meetings, but I don't think that we need to make a formal process, I guess is what I'm saying.
So your idea basically is that our CAO would not be engaging in that stakeholder outreach, but I might, you might, all of our colleagues might, and then when we come back?
I'm fine, yeah, I'm fine with the CAO doing that as well.
Okay, so you're basically saying all of us would be doing that over the coming while, and then?
Sure, yeah, we'll, we'll get feedback, I think, continued feedback, and from community members, from organizations, from impacted folks, from stakeholders, and then we bring that back to the, to the table as policymakers.
And what about the piece on, that I'm very clearly not super fleshed out on, but how we distinguish between the mom and pop and the, and the more, and the larger corporate landlords?
I think, yeah, I wasn't super clear. The only, my only issue around that philosophically is that I don't want a whole lot of loopholes that then the larger corporations can take advantage of in the spirit of trying to protect the mom and pops, so that is another sort of policy conversation, and maybe through our engagement with stakeholders, we can figure out what that language may look like, but I'm not interested in putting any of that in this board letter today, if that makes sense.
That makes sense. But you would imagine that that would come through your engagement to stakeholders or Ebony's or who's, who's engaged?
Probably yours, Chair, because you have the most concern around it, so probably yours. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't mind however it comes, through your office and the CAO. I'm open to it, but I just think that we should keep the board letter as is today. That's mine.
And I agree. Go ahead.
Just to clarify, if I may make a suggestion, we can work with all of your offices as we're working to draft this ordinance. This is noted as a report back versus a return back, so just wanted to look that up as well. Thank you.
Okay. So, that's all helpful, and that, so just like, let me kind of summarize what I'm, think I'm hearing, is that everyone would engage in feedback with stakeholders, and if, if and when an ordinance comes back to have a conversation, then at that time, we would discuss sort of various, different ways of addressing these concerns, as opposed to trying to incorporate that right now.
Yes.
So?
Because that'll be the ordinance in front of us.
Yeah. I want to turn it over to Superizer Desmond, Superizer Anderson. I think, I'm interested in what they say, I obviously think we got to do something, right? Like, that's super clear to me. I think where I'm at is I want to make sure whatever ordinance is drafted is something I can vote for, and I think I'm just being really transparent, that if we don't engage in a process that takes these concerns into account, then we're going to end up with an ordinance that I can't support even though we need to do something. And so that's what I really want to make sure, that we get an ordinance back that I can be behind.
Thank you, Chair.
Superizer Desmond?
Thank you, ma'am Chair, appreciate it. This is a good conversation. So, we all know, the cost of living is the number one concern on everybody's mind right now. Prices, gasoline, electricity, garbage, water, everything has skyrocketed here recently. And while I believe this item is well-intentioned, I think it'll do the opposite, and landlords are going to just increase the rent. And just my personal, so, I was a mom and pop landlord, I had, we had a couple of small single-family homes, rented out. If this fell in my lap and I had to decipher all of this, I would just raise the rent 300, 400 bucks and say, "All right, I'm going to cover whatever fees I might have later." I wouldn't, it's just, it's too convoluted to me. And I do, but I do like, you know, reaching out to other stakeholders, we got, hopefully, I guess we all got a letter from the Southern California Rental Housing Association, who said many of these regulations go beyond the state laws right now, and they're already, there's already a transparency ordinance by the state. I mean, they, we have to be transparent, and I agree, the landlords should be upfront on all the rents and all the fees, but, and I just have a quick question, and I got more comments for Ebony, do we have a rental department, or do we, if somebody thinks their, their contract, are they getting taken by their landlord? Where do they go in the county to complain about that?
We will have to determine where that responsibility will lie as a result of the formulation of the ordinance, but at this point, this is not a requirement that we have in operation.
Okay, because I'm just, I'm just curious, how are we going to enforce this, this stuff once, once, if we do accept the ordinance? On the reusable tenant screening reports, which is in both of the sections here, where an applicant for a residential rental unit provides their own tenant screening or consumer credit report, the landlord is required to accept the report and may not charge the applicant an application fee. I guess, I don't see where somebody's credit report and the application fee, I don't see the connection there, unless you're saying if you give, if the tenant gives you a consumer credit report, you, the landlord can't charge them for another credit report, because I'm trying to see the tie between the two. And quite frankly, I think it should be the landlord's option to accept the credit report from the tenant as opposed to being required by law to accept it. So, you know, the fee transparency is already part of the state regulations. I don't like the expansion of the late rent deadlines, the seven days, I think that's, it goes too far, and, you know, while designed, I like the intent of lessening the fees for the renters, so they know what they're getting, they know what they're getting into, a landlord just can't jack up the rent. And there is a difference between the mom and pops and then the big conglomerates that, you know, do this as a business. I would like to see this come back, I'm not going to be able to support it right now, but I would like to see engagement with the stakeholders, I think the BIA called in, the running, the Southern California Rental Housing Association, and work with them. I mean, I think they understand, we don't want tenants screwed over, we want people to be able to live here and not have surprises. But like I said, I think with, especially smaller landlords, they're just going to raise the rent and to offset regulations and things else, things that they have to deal with, as opposed to, so I think it's going to have a negative effect. So I'm not going to be supporting the item as is. I'd like to see it come back with those adjustments made, as opposed to being in an ordinance right away. Thank you.
Superizer Anderson?
Thank you, ma'am Chair. The concerns that you shared are my concerns. I'm in the process of building an ADU now, and I'm thinking what Jim's thinking. If I rent that, I'm going to jack the rent because I can't afford, it's my retirement, I can't afford it. And when you look at the majority of the people that own rentals in San Diego County, three years ago when we had the, or four years ago when we had the moratorium, it was like the majority of renters. And this only applies to the unincorporated, and I'm thinking, who's going to, who's going to build any future rentals if they can't guarantee a return on their investment? Everyone's going to invest in another state to get their passive income, it won't be local. So, we're not going to solve the problem, and I think there's a case, to me, made, looking at what San Francisco's done, because at one point, San Francisco had 22,000 rental units vacant, because the rights were so great, nobody could afford to rent them for fear that they would lose money. And it was all mom and pops. So, while I appreciate what the authors are saying, they have to show a lot more flexibility than what they're showing right now of, well, we're just going to go down this road. We are not the city. The city has committees, they have hearings, we go out and we come back. And I want to set up a process where at the end of the process, it's something I could support. I don't think we're getting proper input on the front end, and I think we're going to come back with a product that, that's, that doesn't solve anybody's problem. I don't think there's anybody on this board that thinks that rents should go up and people should be taken advantage of, but on the same token, it's not hard to figure out, people aren't going to give away property for free. And I'm thinking, who's going to, who's going to build these, who's going to rent it, and are we making this hill so steep that no one wants to be there and they just move their money to our state? So, I can't support it in its current, I think that the points that you brought up, if we were to address them, I could get there, but I can't get there at this point.
Just a question for you, Superizer Anderson, it is, as you mentioned, for the unincorporated areas, what would a process look like? This is, I think, for Ebony, right? Like, what would a process look like for you that would kind of bring in the feedback that you're looking for?
I think that we should set the goal and not prescribe all the aspects of it, so that as issues, Ebony has the flexibility, that when, like the issue you brought up, they could be addressed in a way that actually meets those needs by working with the industry, as opposed to. as opposed to us sitting around and coming up with ideas without really understanding the marketplace. And, you know, I'm not a huge landlord. I hope to be someday, but I'm not today. But I have rented plenty of apartments along the way in my early career. And I think a lot of this is set up in a way that it's so onerous on the property owner, they're not going to do it. And that's what my concern is, that while we're looking for perfection, we crush, we crush the people that we're trying to help.
I just, thank you. I just want to say, I don't think that's what I'm hearing from my colleagues. I think that just the authors of this motion, I think, have been pretty clear that this is a beginning point and interested in a process. But I just wanted to, I think you and I have the same concern, but I think we might be hearing different things from the makers of the motion. So, I don't know if Supervisor Montgomery Step or Supervisor Gary want to respond to that. You're good, okay.
I think I need five minutes.
Yeah, yeah, we can take five.
Uh huh. I think we're, it's okay.
Okay, you're good.
Yeah.
Jim, one second. Let's just continue, finish the sentence.
Yeah, it's important to me to move forward in the way that, I don't want to waste anyone's time. It's important to move forward and have an up or down vote on the board letter.
Okay. I'll see this, I think this is, just for the record, I'm happy to support this today as is, but I want to make sure kind of the conversation and my concerns are noted in my intent here and, you know, looking for, to ensure that there is a process. I appreciate that Supervisor Anderson, I think Ebony will have, she will have good ideas of who and that incorporated area to talk to. I'm happy to do that consultative work with my own stakeholders. And I think I'm going to be looking for options that allow small, that kind of differentiate between small mom and pop landlords and larger, big corporations in a way that doesn't create loopholes that you can drive a truck through, as I think that would not be helpful, that would be very harmful. But kind of really thinking about how to differentiate our small mom and pop landlords and our larger corporate landlords, and maybe in ways that just really support implementation and training, so we don't end up with people feeling like it's too complicated. So that's sort of like my one big thing. And then, secondly, really looking on alignment with the city, acknowledging we might end up with something different, but at least we're like aware of what the city's doing so that these pieces are not disconnected, even if we end up going in a different direction. And then, I think the third thing is just like really being thoughtful about, are these the right rules? And if in the process of putting this together, other specific rules emerge that aren't listed here that actually make sense, I'd love to see those as options as well. And then, if there's sort of different flavors of how to approach these junk fees that emerge in the conversations, that could either simplify, or maybe, and maybe it's, nothing needs to change, but just, I, that's what I'm going to be looking for, kind of in the report back. So.
I just want to clarify something with county council, because this is the one thing that I think, in looking at the chair pro temp here, too. In the recommendations, we have both report backs. I do think that because we do not have committees, and this will be an ordinance, that it needs to come back to the board for another vote and another discussion. And for the way it's reading now, that is not what it's reading now. So.
Attorney.
Vice Chair Montgomery Step, members of the board, correct. The recommendations, three and four currently ask for a report back, which would be in the form of a memorandum to your board, as opposed to a return back to the board, which would be to actually bring an item back to the board for the board's consideration. If it's memorandum, then it would be up to the board or member or staff to dock it a future letter after that, whereas staff would just come back with the reports and actually as a return. So, if you want to report back, we can do it as memos. If you want us to return for a future meeting at a specific date, then the recommendation would need to be modified to say return as opposed to report.
I think clearly, no matter what, it has to come back to the board, right? I think the question is just, the way it's written is, I think my understanding was it would be a memo back to us for then us to like cook it up and bring it back to the board.
Is that accurate?
It has to come back to us, no matter what.
Okay, then, okay, as is.
Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, because we got to vote like twice more. Okay, I think anyone else, apologies for taking up so much space. I've obviously gotten a lot of outreach on this with my district, so thank you to everybody. Any other comments? Okay, with that, let's take a vote. We have a motion in a second.
Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes with Supervisor Anderson and Supervisor Desmond voting no. All other supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, moving on. What? Okay, Ebony asked me to give our team a moment or two to take a breath, because there's a staff presentation. This is our public hearing, community input for fiscal year 2627, annual plan development for the community development block. There, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair Lawson Reamer, members of the board. The purpose of today's presentation is to receive community input on the fiscal year 2026 to 2027 annual plan strategy for the County of San Diego's federal entitlement programs. These housing and urban development, or HUD-funded, programs bring in over $14 million annually to support housing and community development needs throughout the county, supporting the county housing for all vision, the framework for ending homelessness, and the housing blueprint. The annual plan strategy is developed with community input and sets priorities for funding in the upcoming year's annual plan. Here with me today to present on the process and development of the 2026 to 27 annual plan strategy is Kelly Simmons, Deputy Director of Housing and Community Development Services. Kelly?
Thank you, Kim. These four federal entitlement grants are the county's primary funding source for affordable housing, community development, and related services, providing approximately $14 million per year. All projected funding amounts listed here are based on fiscal year 2025 available funds and are subject to congressional appropriations. Each entitlement program has a slightly different mission. The community development block grant, or CDBG, program supports communities by addressing local housing and community development needs. The home investment partnership program, or HOME, funds the development of affordable housing, first-time homeownership opportunities, and rental assistance to lower-income households. The emergency solutions grant, or ESG, program, provides direct services to persons experiencing homelessness or at risk of experiencing homelessness. And lastly, our housing opportunities for persons with HIV or AIDS, or the HOPWA program provides housing and housing-related services to persons living with HIV or AIDS and their Each HUD entitlement program is managed based on its own funding source and the geographic area it serves. CDBG and ESG programs serve the urban county, which includes the unincorporated area of the county, and the six participating cities of Coronado, Del Mar, Imperial Beach, Lemon Grove, Poway, and Solana Beach. The HOME consortium includes the urban county, along with six additional cities, which are Carlsbad, Encinitas, La Mesa, San Marcos, Santee, and Vista. And the HOPWA program, which serves the entire San Diego County region. To administer HUD entitlement funds, HCDS develops a consolidated plan every five years. The consolidated plan describes the community needs and establishes goals to address these needs through HUD funding. Each year within the five-year consolidated plan cycle, three key documents and processes are completed: the annual plan strategy, the annual plan, and the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, or CAPR. Today's hearing provides an opportunity to receive public comment on the first stage, the annual plan strategy. Priorities identified in this strategy will be used to guide the development of the fiscal year 2627 annual plan, which will be presented to your board in spring of 2026. As previously mentioned, community input is key to the development of the annual plan strategy and subsequent annual plan. In June of 2025, HCDS conducted a variety of community engagement activities to gather feedback on how to prioritize funding. These activities included an online survey, six in-person community input sessions, and two virtual community input sessions. Activities were promoted through social media, targeted emails, and collaboration with other county departments to ensure broad awareness and participation. We also utilize the county's community engagement portal, Engage San Diego County. Through these efforts, HCDS reached over 14,000 residents and stakeholders via its listserv and generated nearly 3,000 social media impressions. In total, 214 residents participated between the input sessions and surveys, and over 900 open-ended qualitative responses were gathered from the surveys. The annual plan strategy has been available for public comment on the HCDS website and in HCDS's lobby since October 3 of 2025. The public comment process was publicized in all county threshold languages, and notices were posted online in the Union Tribune and six additional general circulation publications. Today's hearing marks the end of the public comment period. This slide shows a high-level summary of the feedback gathered from the community. Respondents highlighted a range of priority needs across the region, including more development, rehabilitation, and preservation of affordable housing, especially for older adults, disabled adults, and others on fixed incomes; and increased access to emergency, transitional, and permanent supportive housing options, including rental assistance and homeless prevention services; support for community infrastructure improvements, such as street enhancements and safe community spaces; and support for programs that promote housing and economic stability, such as comprehensive case management, tenant protections, childcare access, workforce development, and other related services. Community feedback continues to reflect reoccurring themes observed in the previous years. Based on the key themes that emerged through community input, along with regional research and data analysis in the consolidated plan, the 2627 annual plan strategy will prioritize funding activities that support the development and rehabilitation of affordable housing, maintain emergency and long-term supportive housing assistance options, improve neighborhoods and public facilities that foster safe, healthy, accessible, connected, and livable communities, and promote housing and economic stability by investing in programs that help individuals maintain housing. Today's action furthers the county's housing for all vision, supports the framework for ending homelessness, and aligns with the five-piece solution framework from the county's housing blueprint, by ensuring that funding supports programs across the homelessness to housed continuum. The requested action before you today is to hold this public hearing to receive public input on housing and community development needs and approve the 2627 annual plan strategy. This concludes the presentation, and we're available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? No. Public comment?
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have eight requests to speak on this item, four in person and four requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we did not receive any ecomments. Any individuals that requested to speak on item 16 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak. You'll have two minutes to address the board. I'd like to invite forward allegedly Audra, Caesar Javier, Mark, and Natalie Raschke.
You guys are funny. Ending homelessness, that's a business that you're trying to end. You know, the homeless industrial complex? And we're allowing a human trafficker to sit here and give reports like, "It sounds good, Kimberly," right? It's got to do that on the surface, right? Good predators do that. They sound good when they're coming in and being like, "The government's going to take your home, but we're here to help, and we're going to provide government-funded housing for you, along with the government-funded healthcare, where we're going to put you on psychotropic drugs. And then we're going to control the food supply and give you back your own, not only sewage for water, but human remains, right? Like soylent green and stuff like that. But it'll be good, it'll be healthy, right?" Right. It's funny to hear you guys talk about wanting to end something that you make money off of. The whole point is to keep the status quo going. If you get rid of homelessness, there's no money that comes in. You guys are money hoars, and you'll do anything for it, right, Kimberly? Right. Doesn't matter how many children you have to traffic. How many of those homeless children are you trafficking, right? Those are good families to go in and rip apart, because they obviously can't take care of their children, right? You guys can do it better, right? Right. It's so sad that people come up here and thank you. "Thank you so much for destroying our lives. Thank you so much for robbing Peter to pay Paul. Thank you so much for calling it affordable," right? Oh my gosh, we are in the days of hell. Like, these are the days of Noah. Monica, you would know if you read the Bible, right? Are we not? Right? Famines, ruins of wars, things like that. We are in those days. So, things are going to get worse. Everybody better buckle up, because, but it'll be okay. The government will be here to help us through this. Thank you, guys.
Next speaker, please.
Mark, well, this is straight up UN Agenda 21. So, people, this board is not going to stop it. They're literally being paid to implement it. So, people need to see this from three minutes and 30 seconds. She's an expert. If you see it, you'll understand why. An absolute, the expert. There are some times for parts one, two, and three. People should see all of it, but that'll help. Resilient Cities Network, see this, these are all YouTube titles. See this at five minutes, 38 seconds. This actually talks about how the World Economic Forum, the world's corporations, and the United Nations are joining together to collect all the data of all the people in one place. That means you, for anyone who's not sure out there. This is important. This will tell you about Agenda 21. This is what's being done to you through these boards and commissions, and unelected boards and commissions also, too. Like Sandeg, who, while elected for the things they're elected to, they're not elected to do what they're doing. It's such a, they're doing mega regions. And Rosa Corey will tell you about that. You need to see this. We're actually, our mega region is part of Mexico. What a complete scam that is. And you can see Sandeg planning to get you out of your car, force you out, at an hour and, one hour, 22 minutes and 50 seconds, this title, that's the Sandeg meeting. They're a total scam. There are states that are doing things to stop this, to stop UN Agenda 21. Here's a resolution by Tennessee. Mayor Bill Wells, he said Sandeg's new multimodular approach won't have any freeway expansion, which everyone voted for, by the way. Corporation Nation, see this at three hours and 29, not, three hours, 29 minutes. This will just blow your mind, how money in our government really works. Klaus Schwab of the World Economic Forum, message, or try this one at three minutes to six minutes.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with our first caller.
Andrew, before you start, my time, is it 60 seconds or two minutes? I thought there's only eight speakers.
You have two minutes, Consuelo.
Woo, okay, thank you. Okay, so this item exposes how flawed and one-sided these grant programs truly are. Once again, we see Band-Aid, fixins, and selective funding designed to serve only certain areas, mostly West County. Well, East County is left behind. If the mission is to serve the entire county, then why are vital programs like housing, emergency services, and mental health support limited by region? This imbalance was not by accident, it's by design. Decades of government neglect, poor planning, and self-serving policies have created this mess. Affordable housing cannot be solved with more of the same bureaucratic spam. real solutions that move fast and meet real needs, like Paul the Bold and Mark Dorian have mentioned several years now, for several years now. Okay, so until this board stops playing favorites and starts serving everyone equally, the divide will only grow, and the people will continue paying the price for government failures. For government failures. For government failures. For government failures. I think it's government failures, yeah? Yeah, for government failures. That's it. Government failures. And guess what? We allow it all. We allow the government to fail on our dime, over and over and over. Insane. Done.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
The grant programs, unless one has AIDS and is poor, but three of them are all in West County. Since your mission is to serve the entire county, I'm taken aback by your apparent failure to even expand these grant conditions. This means that most new housing development will be in West County, but what is worse is that the emergency services grant providing services like medical and rehousing for the homeless is West County only, which means that East County will probably end up becoming less healthy, the destination for the homeless. Page A7 says that an overwhelming amount of community input was concerned with affordability. This is a definite sign that you need way more housing units than the 5% or 10% low-income housing usually offered by the big landlords. Not sure how community participants can, quote, prioritize funding for housing, unquote, but to me, this strongly suggests abandoning traditional building methods for 3D-printed homes, tiny homes, shipping crate homes, Adobe homes, and so on. They're a lot quicker to build and therefore keep up with the need for housing. They won't end up with a huge, oversly bunch of empty units when they're built. Also shorten those 15-year waiting lists. Sandeg and MTS need to beef up their transportation efforts for the entire county, not just provide a few buses.
Thank you. Hear from the final caller.
I'm not a stakeholder, I'm a people. The people that is protected by the Constitution, the people that you serve. Obviously, you serve stakeholders, people with vested interest in what you're doing. You are treating the government like a business, excluding anyone that does not agree with your thing, because they are not a stakeholder in your decisions. So therefore, you think you have the right to violate all these people's love, because you think we are no longer the people of the United States, we are stakeholders grouped together with lobbyists and corporate industries. Those people are not protected by the Constitution, by the way. So what the hell are you doing? Who do you serve? You serve the stakeholders, corporations, NGOs, and people that agree with you. You don't serve anyone that disagrees with any of your decisions, proven how you've treated me this entire fucking time. So, do you want to continue breaking your oath of office? Or do you want to go ahead and reshape your decision-making process? By all means, go ahead and pass this measure for the stakeholders, not the people that are complaining. Ignore them all you want, because there is consequences for violating the Constitution. I hope you really, really recognize that. And I'm in talks with people to go ahead and defend me. So let's go ahead and talk about what you have done to me, because you don't view that I am a stakeholder, so therefore you don't have to listen to what I have to say. Isn't that correct? That's why you changed the definition. Let's be perfectly fucking clear. You wanted to exclude the people in making these decisions and only include NGOs and everyone that fucking agrees with you. So stop your...
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments from my colleagues or questions? Supra Zeguri.
Do you need a motion?
Supra Zeguri has raised her hand.
Thank you, Chair. Just very brief, I'm very pleased to see the categories that have been identified in the plan. In particular, I want to highlight the importance of the first category, more development, rehabilitation, and preservation of affordable housing, especially for older adults, disabled adults, and others on fixed incomes. The preservation of existing affordable housing must remain a top priority, as it's often one of the most immediate and cost-effective ways to keep people housed. We look forward to seeing the specific projects that will be identified under these categories and how they will advance housing stability, affordability, and equity across the region. So I want to thank Steph for all your hard work on this issue and for your work on the plan, and with that, I'm happy to move the item. Supra Zeguri, Montgomery, Steph.
Thank you so much. I'm happy to second. I do want to thank the community residents for providing their input during the public noticing period and also the hearing today. We know as a part of this process, that's an extremely important process, and I believe there'd be a second hearing in spring of 2026, is that... Okay. These HUD funding have really allowed community organizations to receive funding and provide housing and other social programs for services for a very, very long time. And so although we're seeing cuts in this area, still need to keep up with our annual plan and make sure that our priorities are at least put down on paper so that we can continue to try to exceed them. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay, with that, we'll take a vote.
Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We now move on to item 17, Providing Direction on the Future of County Technology Districts. Okay. Yep, we're waiting for the stop.
Good afternoon, Chair Lawson Reamer and members of the board. I appreciate the time granted to share this presentation. My name is Eric Shuizugu. I'm the Acting Chief Information Officer for the county, and I'm here today to present on an independent assessment to investigate whether the current IT contract meets best practices and an innovation fund strategy. The county Board of Supervisors established an ad hoc subcommittee for artificial intelligence and information technology infrastructure. The first several meetings addressed different aspects of AI and its role in the workforce, resulting in adoption of the artificial intelligence board policy. Between April and September, the county performed a competitive procurement to obtain an independent contractor to assess the current IT and T contract, to assess best practices against our peer groups. This report back also includes the innovation fund strategy requested by the board. Today, I will cover a summary of the report provided by Avasant and share with the board the report as an attachment to the board letter. Avasant aggregated data into four sections to be rated against our peer groups, which are organizations in the public and private sector with similar size and complexity. The four areas include the solutions, currency, pricing and value, and contract. We will also cover the board's requests on outsourcing trade-offs, customer feedback, innovation fund strategy, and recommendations. The color-coded alignment indicators are for each of the four sections. This is the overall summary provided for the total report, which is in the green region, meaning the counties within its peer group range. This slide was provided to show overall response to all four sections that are detailed within the report. I'll cover a bit more detail on the following slides for each section, which gets into further broken-down detail in the actual report. The first section of the evaluation of the IT is the IT solutions implemented in the county to support delivery of services in county departments. In Avasant's assessment, the county was found to be in alignment with best practices for the solution developed and implemented. Avasant has numerous topics covered in this section and noted strengths in technologies and tools. Some areas for improvement are in decrease in artificial intelligence for operations and agile adoption. We can now explore these options with the newly approved AI board policy in place. The second section focuses on how current the technology hardware is within the lifecycle of Avasant. Avasant places the county at some of the highest marks. The report stated that the county has strong lifecycle management to devices, exceptional lifecycle discipline, and alignment with lifecycle targets. It was also noted, the mainframe and AS400 were also areas identified as being out of the refresh cycle. The pricing value information by framework is comparing what we pay compared to the value of the service, all in comparison to our peer group. Data center, applications, and user and service desk were within our peer group range or better, as designated by the markers in the far-right column. The one area that Avasant found to be out of range in our peer group is the network framework and noted opportunities for potential savings. Avasant performed a benchmark assessment on the county's spend in comparison to our peer group. Avasant uses a few different data calculations to measure and rate these. This includes a total IT spend as a percentage of revenue, the operational spend as a percentage of revenue, the IT capital as a percentage of total IT budget, and the IT operational spend normalized to a per-user amount. They reported that the county is currently within the peer group range and is in alignment with, in the terms of spend, in four out of the five areas. The one outlier is the outsourcing percentage of IT budget, which is 78%, meaning a higher percentage of what we spend on IT is to outsourcing, and our peer group spends in the range of 15 to 21%. While the overall IT spend is within our peer group range, Avasant explained this is associated with full IT outsourcing compared to partial outsourcing. Avasant provided a number of recommendations, which include their thoughts on sourcing strategies to be considered. They stated the current contract is high-performing but rigid, while full in-sourcing is currently prohibitively expensive. There are areas they believe would benefit from multi-sourcing, which is the applications and network framework. The board also directed us to look at the continuous improvements such as customer satisfaction. The county conducts an employee survey by Gartner, an independent consultant that goes to all the county employees every year. The IT satisfaction survey in 2025 scored a 4.4 out of 5 that keeps the county in best-in-class, which is rated based on commercial and public sector clients of Gartner. The key to this survey is a written feedback, which is the county technology, which the county technology office uses this information to adjust its IT services to continuously improve satisfaction. This has resulted in year-over-year improvements in the IT satisfaction survey results. In addition, the county technology office has made a feedback form available on the CTO Intranet site specifically regarding to the current IT and future IT contract. This form allows the county employee to provide qualitative and subjective input on how we can improve any topic or related IT services. We'll continue to gather this information to ensure continuous improvement remains a priority and also share this information with the board. Our CIO established a culture of innovation as one of her initiatives to surface and assess ideas with the potential to improve operations, pilot new concepts, or explore market engagement through a business proposal. With this foundation, we would tie in the $1 million fund that is part of the IT outsourcing contract, where Periton and County both contribute $500,000 for innovation governed by the terms of the contract. In parallel to the board's directive to explore funding, we'll include research into state and federal grants or vendor opportunities to explore innovations to gain efficiencies. With this recent board approval of the artificial intelligence policy, this will open doors to additional innovation topics to probe efficiencies within our guidelines. The recommendations before the board today are to direct the CIO to take the first step in the county procurement process, to conduct a request for information, to inform the county of vendor information, interested parties, and available options to meet the requirements of the county enterprise and departments. Also direct the CIO for a return back in March 2026 with the results and recommend next steps, and also receive the report from Avasant. Subject to your questions, this concludes the staff presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Any initial questions from my colleagues before we go to public comment? Okay, go to public comment, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 10 requests to speak on this item, five in person and five requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we did not receive any ecomments on this item. Any individuals that requested to speak on item 17 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you will have one minute to address the board, and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. We'll be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, Assessor Recorder County Clerk Jordan Marks, followed by allegedly Audra and Caesar Javier.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Chair Lawson Reamer. My name is Jordan Marks, and it's my honor to serve as your favorite San Diego County Assessor Recorder County Clerk, and I want to thank the board members for the time today to speak to the future of our county technology. Specifically, I'd also like to thank Supervisor Joel Anderson for his leadership in requesting an audit during the April 8th meeting, but more importantly, that the entire board came together for commissioning and sharing the recent Avasant IT audit and assessment. I want to also express appreciation to our CIO Ebony Shelton, David Smith, and our CIO Eric Shuizugu for your ongoing efforts to advance modernization across the enterprise systems. The Avasant report provides a valuable, independent perspective on the state of the county's enterprise technology contract when compared to other counties. However, we must be clear, this was an assessment and not a full audit. This assessment, I believe, fell short of identifying our deeper risks, such as potential failures and legacy hardware, the lack of staffing expertise needed to service and maintain these legacy systems, and the overall operational impact should one of these systems have a catastrophic failure. There are risks that are directly affecting our county operations and services of delivery. It's important to have a comparison assessment, but it is imperative that we have an evaluation process and audit that actually engages key stakeholders like my office and team in the process. For that reason, we respectfully ask that the board consider conducting a comprehensive enterprise IT audit and risk assessment, one that fully involves departments and measures real operational and security risks across the county. Thank you for your leadership and your focus on strengthening our county technology.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
This is beyond negligent. It's like, you can see where you guys' priorities are at. First of all, California didn't want to give their SNAP data, so you wonder why you're not getting money, because nobody wants to report fraud, right? And then you're willing to spend a billion dollars on AI while people are about to not be able to eat and have to leave their homes, and we have a homeless crisis, right? Right? Makes sense. Makes sense. No wonder we're... Tara, you love your data, and this feeds this beast. And it's funny, because it's like, how many jobs is it gonna displace for you guys to implement this, when you talk about wanting to keep people's jobs, you know, and civil liberties being eroded? That's where AI is leading, to a nice little Antichrist being implemented. But there's a lot of misinformation as well, and it's very sad, because it's biased data, because it is trained through the data it gets. But as long as you want to manipulate the people, keep going. But yeah, this is a slap in the face to all the people suffering. It shows where your priorities are, and it's not them.
Thank you. I'd like to call the remaining speakers in person. Mark and Natalie Raschke.
Mark, you started my time already, you shouldn't have. The board also directed the CIO to explore The board also directed the CIO to explore funding mechanisms, including state and federal grants to support artificial intelligence, innovation, and technology upgrades while ensuring alignment with sustainability goals. That's these are quotes from your sustainability impact statement. Providing county services online rather than in person additionally responsible IT governance ensures that existing and emerging technologies align with ethical and okay. So this is all Agenda 21. This is how it will be implemented, of course, is with AI. You can see Klaus Schwab talking about taking over, you know, infiltrating countries. And then these are times oracle. It's not right or left. Trump, they're both sides are doing it. Trump's doing it with his friend Larry Ellison horribly bad. See these YouTube videos. AI.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with their first caller.
It's not fair on this. That's absurd. This is a big topic.
The county's IT services are stable. Systems are reliable, and there are no occurring other user failures. Most assets are current with 90% of the hardware within support cycles, which is quite high for a county of this size and caliber. The report says you are strong in Wi-Fi six adoption. Speed is nice, but the electronic frequencies cause havoc with medically sensitive people. Caution is applicable. It then says artificial intelligence AI operations are limited. This would seem to include dedicated robotic cross automation tools. They should be limited or nonexistent. If your info technology is so good, I don't think you need AI, period. AI has no conscience, and it doesn't really need humans, the environment, or civilization. They've killed, maimed, or falsely IDed people as criminals, and it would just.
We'll now hear from the next caller.
About the county's future, Oconswello here. This item is about the county's future of use of technology. Okay. The report says IT systems are reliable, but introducing more AI is a dangerous path, as my husband mentioned. Artificial intelligence is not foolproof. It's already caused wrongful arrests, false court data, and serious real world harm. AI has no conscience, as my husband mentioned, no heart, and no accountability. It's not naturally biased, but it can be programmed to favor government or corporate interests, which makes it a powerful tool for control. If AI takes over much of the work, then government if AI takes over much of the work, then government pay should reflect that because less human input means less justification for high salaries. Got it? We must not trade human discernment for machine logic. Technology should never serve humanity and not replace it. Technology should serve humanity.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
On an assessment rather than the audit. If this is about how to downscale county employees for a million dollar year, what justification is there to keep investing that much money every year? The AI framework itself had several loopholes on privacy. Avastant is a huge global firm headquartered in El Segundo. Their foundation is partnered with nefarious entities such as the World Bank, UN Global Compact, the Rockefeller Foundation, and the Clinton Global Initiative. So obviously, they're using their profits for evil. CEO Kevin Freek thinks we should all embrace disruption as a force for progress. Sounds like World Economic Forum nut job. He claims to have been presidential appointee and lawyer to the government. Doesn't say who, but if true, maybe Obama. And of course, Avastant recommended spending more money on another vendor and an app. Why would they recommend multiple different vendors to make things complex and expensive? This is not going to result in more agility. It will result in more bureaucracy. The 47-page assessment was a waste of tax dollars. Peer pricing for who? You guys, that's about it, right? More money. That's all this is about.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the final caller.
Oh, there's not the people. Listen to the people. They're flat out pointing this out. They're showing you how the fact that this is going to hurt San Diegans more than it will help it, especially when we're going through a crisis. So you want to go ahead and spend as much friggin' money as possible when all the people are hurting. Instead of addressing the people, you want to make sure that your stakeholders, the corporations, are getting their fair share of our money and crippling us in the process. Please, I would like you to start referencing us, the people, not the stakeholders, every single action you take. I would like you to go ahead and announce that you're going to start addressing the people's concerns, not your fucking stakeholders. Do you understand that? Do you fucking understand that? We are not stakeholders. We are the people protected by the Constitution. And once the people realize that, you are.
Thank you. Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Anderson.
No, go ahead.
I was I thought you might have something to say on the future of county technology.
Well, I just had a quick question. Why our audit didn't include the assessor's office and did we include the treasurer's office?
Through the chair. Thank you, Supervisor Anderson. The audit was to assess the standards, kind of how we are in the best practices. So it wasn't looking at it was looking at the county as a whole for best practices. From the April 8th board meeting, that's you asked us to kind of look at that aspect. So we didn't look at like individual, like specific risk assessment or issues like one-off. It was more a cumulative assessment.
When I read the summary, it was talking about how we've, I think it was 90, over 90%, we're up to speed with equipment. But I know for a fact in the assessor's office, they're using DOS and they're using COBOL, and those are dead languages. So the only issue I had was to be so radically off on such a big function of the county, you know, not to include that when looking at where are we moving along. I didn't know what the rationale was for that.
Supervisor Anderson, in the report, they did it's we have thousands of hardware that they assessed. They did identify the mainframe AS400, and that's the assessors, the two-piece equipment the assessor has that didn't meet the refresh cycle because we're in the middle of the integrated property tax system. But yes, there was two, the two items, the mainframe and the AS400.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other comments from anyone? Supervisor Gary.
Thank you. Just a question more so, will the contract include accountability measures for performance, key performance indicators? And also, what are the incentives to innovate? That was kind of delineated, but I don't know if there's a more structured format that you are planning on including.
Thank you for the question, Chair Pro Tim McGarry. We we have the innovation fund today, which has is outlined in the contract and how it's governed. We can add more controls and governance around the innovation. I know through the new, through the culture of innovation, we're adding more kind of guidelines to include the community, the departments, and everyone like that. So we can we can include all that into the actual agreement as well.
Yeah, I think that would be good, as well as, you know, this is such a new field, I would say. I didn't see anything related to, and I'm not saying it has to have hard like environmental protections, but environmental considerations of the use of AI. What are we? Are we even considering that?
Yes, sustainability is a big component now. So we're looking at like even right now, Paratone's listing out calculating how they're using their the resources. So their lead certified in their facilities, they're looking at different measurements with who we do business with between our cloud providers and our data centers, how much, you know, emissions and output. So we're trying to measure that and look to improve upon those. So we do have baseline measurements now that we'll continue to try and improve upon.
Will that be, will there be, for example, a scoring table on who potentially has more environmental considerations and who doesn't?
We definitely can add that as an attribute to look at and make sure it's accounted for, so it's not just an oversight or something like that.
Okay, that would be good. Thank you. Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am chair. I apologize. I wanted to thank you for your hard work before I started with the questions. The this was a major task that we took on, and I thank you for that. Are we going to be, there were a lot of recommendations in it. Are we going to be accepting those recommendations? How is that? How are their recommendations going to translate in our move moving forward?
Supervisor Anderson, thank you for the question. We're going to take it and assess them all, definitely. But it has to go with the full assessment, and we're looking to do an RFI after also to gather more information and then get vendor information back from the community. So putting it all together and then assess it all together, working with the board offices and the county staff to figure out a recommendation forward. So it's input, and we're going to look at them seriously, but it's really just part of the input.
The last thing I'd like to give you is my input. When I read the assessment and went through it, the concern I had moving forward is many of the companies that would potentially bill bid on any future contract already work for Paratone as a subvendor, and they're very familiar with the product because they're doing it now. Is there any way to put any kind of protections into or I'd just like for you to think about this. I'm not sure if it's legal, but I'm concerned that we won't have a lot of people bidding on future contracts if they think they're going to lose a future, their current contract if they don't get the bid. If there's any kind of protections that we could add, and maybe this is more of a, for Mr. Smith, a legal question, but, you know, we have this billion-dollar contract, and we have all these subvendors, and yet those are many of the people that potentially would bid on the contract to give us a better price, better quality of service, whatever they're promoting. I just want to make sure that we've taken every precaution to ensure that we get the most quotes that from people that are viable that could do the work. I'd said a lot of things. It's not that difficult. I just want to make sure that we get the best vendors applying to fill the contract, whatever contracts we put forward.
Supervisor Anderson through the chair. Yes, a couple of different things. We have protections in the existing agreement that prohibit conflicts of interest, ensure that the vendor and the county does some things to manage the procurements itself. We have looked in, my apologies, we've looked into ways to limit the number of individuals that will be able to see it, keep confidential the request for information responses that we get. And then just generally engage in good business because this comes up in any procurement where you may have someone that has subcontractors, whether it's local vendors or large vendors. So we have a number of ways that we approach this, and we will keep a close eye on it.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just had a quick comment. I think overall, the approach makes sense. I think it'd be helpful to just kind of take into the account the differential needs, the diverse needs of different departments, different programs, different users. I know that the methodology here kind of, as you mentioned, looked like at average at the county overall. But when we are going to look for, you know, what kind of technology solutions can meet the needs of this county, we I think we have to get pretty specific and and better do some assessment on the front end to better understand what those specific needs are and where where are those needs already being met and where frankly, they're not being met so that we can do better in the future and not just take like a one-size-fits-all approach. And I think I'd be pretty interested in that information, like whatever we're doing. I think I was told that we're doing some kind of survey to get a better understanding of customer service, like experiences that's specific to different departments. I think that'd be really helpful to understand better as we move forward, and also frankly, would be helpful, really important for the vendors.
Thank you, Chair. We we have the survey that's out on the CTO Internet site, and anybody in the county can submit a response, and it's subjective, and it could just be it's plain, they could just submit a sentence or a paragraph of their main concern or their perception or challenge or issue, and we will address it. So and it's open to all employees. And that's for something to fix in the current contract or something what they want to see in the new contract. So that survey is out there, and as we collect the feedback, and I will share that back with the board.
That would be great, and that's super helpful. I think it would also be, I think, instructive to have something a little bit more unbiased, right? So that you don't end up with only like the squeaky wheels with big problems or the people who think everything's great. What about sort of the the user who's slightly annoyed day to day but isn't motivated enough to like get on the website and issue write-up a complaint? How are we going to capture that?
We could do, we could do a department. I can actually talk to do with the department heads and get that information and see what they're hearing out there. We also have the IT people in departments I can talk to, see, is there areas that I need to look into more and kind of solicit that information? It's, I guess, more of a reach out.
Yeah, that's what I think I'm looking for in a way that is a little bit more thoughtful about getting a more representative sample of users and not just, like I said, either the people who think everything's great or the people who think the sky is falling, right? You know, what's a more representative sample? And, you know, maybe maybe you end up with like 80% of folks have like low-grade frustration and annoyance with some aspect of the system, but it's it's not severe enough that they're motivated to come on and like do a little write-up of their feedback on the county website. But if we outreach to them, it would it would surface. I think that would be really helpful, like certainly before we're able to evaluate these RFIs, I really want us to understand like what are the real needs? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so in addition to the survey that's out there now that anyone can respond to, I'll figure out an outreach way to the departments and the users to try and figure out who, how you can talk with them or get that information. I have to all over the team and return.
That would be great. I think, for example, if you'd reached out to Supervisor Anderson, he might have not very good feedback, so, you know, just giving you a hard time.
I'm going to speak to him. Thanks for being here.
So, okay, that was that's really my point. So thank you. I was going to make another joke, but I'll wait. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor from anyone? Okay, I have a motion from Supervisor Anderson. Anyone like to second?
I'll second.
Okay, a second by Supervisor Gary. Please vote.
Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we're moving on to any if there's any board committee updates from anyone?
Yes.
Please.
Thank you. Well, last week, I went to Washington DC. It was easy getting a Uber, it was easy getting restaurant reservations. There wasn't many people there, but I went out and I was able to meet. I was able to meet with several agencies, both on waste, human and nuclear. So I had a really good meeting with the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, in their offices in DC, which also included a meeting with Chad McIntosh. He is the commissioner of the International Boundary Waters Commission. The EPA has done a lot of work in a short period of time addressing the sewage coming from Mexico and the United States, polluting our water, closing our beaches, and threatening national security by preventing Navy SEALs training at Coronado. But we were able to discuss with the EPA and the IBWC, the MOU that was signed with Mexico in July. The MOU secures Mexico's financial commitments and makes it a priority for the Mexican government, and I want to thank Lee Zeldin and the administration for making this happen. The MOU also accelerates the project timelines on the 10 million gallon expansion. Uh, the MOU also accelerates the project timelines on the 10 million gallon expansion of the South Bay International Waste Water Treatment Plant. It was supposed to take two years to add that, uh, 10 million gallon expansion. It was completed in a hundred days, uh, just as past August. Uh, they also told us the startup is going well. They ramped up the treatment from five million gallons to the full 10 million gallons a day, uh, a couple of weeks ago. So that treatment plan is now, uh, processing 35 million gallons a day of sewage from Tijuana. Commissioner McIntosh also mentioned the EPA Administrator, Mr. Zeldin, uh, that whenever he goes and speaks to, speaks to the president, the president asks him and inquires about, uh, the, uh, what's happening in the Tijuana River area. So it's very front, uh, frontline issue, uh, for the federal leaders. I also spent, uh, met with the spent nuclear fuel and, and that, I, I've spent time with the congressional staff, the senate staff and the Department of Energy staff to push for a permanent solution on the topic of the spent nuclear fuel at San Onofre. In fact, we met with a staff member of the Department of Energy, Dr. Erica Bickford, who's in charge of the spent new, uh, spent fuel storage and transportation for the entire country, uh, in the Office of Nuclear Energy. So we talked about progress towards a permanent repository and also what came up this time for the first time is technologies on the horizon for potentially reprocessing or recycling the spent nuclear fuel into, into, uh, smaller modular reactors. So hopefully we, you're looking at a parallel path of hopefully burying it somewhere, but also if there's the capability to potentially reusing some of the spent fuel, uh, nuclear fuel that's there. So, uh, it's, San Onofre is in my district, uh, it's in front of mind and, uh, we're, we're still looking for solutions to try to move that. Uh, I also do, I need to talk to them about the dismantling or tearing down of San Onofre. Uh, they tell me, I guess, um, truss, is it, is it trestles? Is that where the, where the surfing competition's gonna be?
Trestles.
Trestles, okay. Sorry. Grew up in a cornfield. But anyway, the, um, so trestles, so they actually, what they're hoping to have are the domes gone, uh, so that it's not in the backdrop of the, uh, Olympic surfing competition. So it looks like the domes will be taken down here shortly. Most of the other, other buildings are already demolished.
Will it impact the surf break?
Oh, yeah. Not at all. I have no idea.
That's all, that, that was the.
No, that's not gonna, yeah. Well, just, yeah.
Two on five surfers on.
Yeah, it's, uh, no, it, it shouldn't, but it was a very interesting, and to be honest with you, it was really easy getting around DC, uh, but, uh, but the staffers were all there, as most of the congress members in senate were not there, but the staffers were still there and were able to meet with us. Thanks.
Thank you for the thorough report back. Um, anyone else have anything they'd like to share or add? Okay. Um, we'll go on now to non-agenda public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have eight remaining requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, two individuals in person and six requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. I'd like to invite forward our two in-person speakers, allegedly Audra and Jennifer Roysdin.
Aye. I'd like to speak tomorrow.
Okay. Audra has indicated she will speak tomorrow. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone and we'll just give the callers a minute to dial in. Chair Lawson Reamer, I'm not seeing any callers dialed in at this time for non-agenda public comment.
Okay. Then we'll move to closed session comment.
Thank you very much. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak on item 19, which are closed session matters on today's general legislative agenda. The closed session matters include three items, so your comments should be associated to those, related to those three items. We have seven requests to speak on the closed session matters, three in person and four requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone on item 19, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. I'd like to invite forward our in-person speakers, allegedly Audra, Cesar Javier and Mark. You'll have two minutes to address the board.
Looks like one of you got, one of the cases that you have is a reflection of what happens in foster care with Arabella, 11 years old, 48 pounds when she died because she was malnourished and had roughly, you know, 13 unhealed fractures, right? Her adopted dad took his own life the day she died. But you guys wanna act like this system is good and we actually help kids. But there was mandated reporters who neglected to report the abuse. Child welfare services should be held accountable for putting these girls, her, even her sisters, in the care of the McCormicks. But instead, it's like as long as they get their money, right? Doesn't matter if they're depriving children of food and water, making them do crazy things, you know? But the system works, right? You guys aren't hiding abuse, sexual abuse, right David? Allowing that kinda stuff to be entered into the court record by your employees, Jen, Jessica Feldman, hmm? Working with Nicole McCon. This is the kinda stuff I'm talking to you guys about and you all look down. She did not deserve to die like that. And Jim, this is a, this is the way the system works. They rip kids apart from families that love them and put them into places like this and then refuse to mitigate abuse. All for profit. And no amount of money is gonna bring that little girl back. But this is the failures that run the system. It isn't a failure, it's a success at the cost of lives.
Thank you. Now hear from the next speaker.
Mark, so this is in reference to the case that Audra was citing. This is the title of a, uh, of a YouTube video or an article. I think it's a YouTube video. And, uh, it's a senate hearing where a whistleblower is telling the senate that, uh, she worked for HHS and her job was to call and vet, uh, foster parents. And of course, she said, oh, specifically by the way, for, um, uh, illegal alien children especially, um, other children too. And she couldn't. She said literally, um, there was no vetting really done whatsoever. It was only a phone call. They never met the parents, the prospective parents. Uh, once these people had the child, the children, uh, it was hard to reach them. They might not even answer the phone. And, uh, yeah, it's just absurd, the foster care system that we have set up in this country. And, uh, Audra is citing absolute proof that she's been right the whole time, that a little girl could be given to a foster family that starved to death after she was beaten is just In America, it's just, I, I have no words for it. And I'm sure it's happening all over the place to many, many children right fucking now.
Now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with our first caller.
This report paints a picture of progress. Um, wait, hold on, sorry. Oh, fuck. Yeah, I too, I'm a little off for words. Okay. Uh, the item today, your so-called closed session hides behind the usual curtain of legal counsel and labor negotiations, but the truth is, these cases are about government failure and its most unforgivable level. And, uh, Arabella McCormick, a Native American child, was beaten, starved and died with 13 fractures while under the supervision of county child welfare services. Hundreds of visits, hundreds of opportunities to stop it and no one did. You were supposed to protect her. Instead, you protected the system. Instead of rescuing a child, your agencies closed files, ignored tribal notification laws and accepted nonsense explanations while child's body broke down in silence and now the county hides behind confidentiality and ongoing litigation.
Consuelo, your device might be muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. You have 45 seconds. Please go ahead.
Dang it. Oh, well, that's so lame. This is so important and this is so lame. I hate this system. This is entire, this, somebody died, you know? I mean, it happens all the time, I know this, but god damn it. I mean, how many more headlines, how many more children have to die for you to act with humanity and humility instead of a political caution and, and obeying laws and rules? And Terra Paloma, Monica, all of you guys, how do you sleep at night? You continue to fund, defend and perpetuate a system that crushes the vulnerable and shields the guilty, all while pretending you play hero. This isn't, this is, this shit needs to end, man. You guys freaking suck, seriously. I mean, ah, it is what it is, okay. It'll get better without you guys, without this government.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
For putting the report in an adjustable format. Uh, so, Arabella McCormick versus San Diego Church and various city and county and other or agency. Arabella and her sister and brother of Native American origin were put through the child welfare service, adoption and beaten and abused and starved. Arabella died with 13 fractures, hundreds of visits, witnesses and opportunities to report and correct. No one did. The grand jury issued a totally damning report. CWS, what a joke. Knew that, about this abuse since 2018. In fact, sent someone out numerous times, by the way. And just as Audra says, the employees know that children won't, won't report abuse in front of the parents. Yet the CWS worker interviewed her with her parent with the predictable result that the mother reported that withholding water was for stomach issues. Doesn't make sense, even medical sense, but CWS closed the file. The visits and abuse went on for several years. Uh, CWS didn't notify her tribe or use medically skilled investigators as required by law. CWS needs to be reformed. Um, probably people need to be fired and the county needs to settle. I expect to hear this in your report of actions taken. The county is apparently seeking a permanent candid counsel, hopefully one who profits better than the last several incumbents.
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller.
Case A, uh, I was just doing a little research, refreshing my memory. It says, uh, social workers investigated multiple abuse complaints years before Arabella's death, detailed in internal documents from the county. So the county actually released documents on this case, huh? That's interesting. Usually guys are always trying to cover things up. I was just leaving a comment last night about how I couldn't get records from the county. You guys love saying that, uh, certain text messages don't exist. Or, you know, case B, David likes to say you can't even read them, even if they're publicly available. Um, but yeah, it is a horrible case. I kinda forgot about it until I was just scrolling here again. I think everybody covered it though. Uh, I think if I just say it in a short way, what it comes down to is the county sells children. So when you say that you care about people, whether it's poor renters or the children or hunger, poverty, no you don't, because you'd prove it in your actions if you did. And you guys continue to sell at doing that. And mostly I'm gonna br- blame the three wannabe queens, because those are the biggest hypocrites I've ever heard. And, uh, case B, let's get back to that. Why does this board always hire unqualified people to fill the top spots? Because you can look at DAS, another example of county corruption, you could see exactly what I mean. And case C, the political union bosses eventually getting their kickback bonuses by the three wannabe queens having to admit that they can't get four votes to raid the reserves. So the county's gonna end up restructuring departments, which translates to people losing their jobs, hence the introduction of AI. Usually we refer to this as mismanagement. And I actually have an upcoming video for my social media that David would love, talks about the entire Terra Politico deal, reading the whole email. Um, and Monica, how you avoid talking too much? Just don't talk at all, terror two. And on performance, it looks like Manuela's gonna, is going to the same orange fake tanning salon as the Donald. So reminder from anywhere in the world, I can and will call into these meetings until Manuela is permanently out of office. Thank you. Have a wonderful day, Jim Desmond, for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on the closed session matters.
Thank you all very much. Um, we'll now go to germans in memory. The first is presented by Superarz Joel Anderson for Daniel James Tucker.
Thank you, ma'am chair. A good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to adjourn today's meeting in memory of Dan, Daniel Tucker, a respected community leader known for his lifelong commitment to the Kumia Nation, the Native American community in all San Diego. Daniel held multiple leadership roles throughout his life, including serving for more than three decades as the tribal council, on the tribal council of the Saqan Band of Kumia Nation. This included four terms as chairman and three terms as vice chair. Beyond that role, he also served as chairman of the California Nation's Indian Gaming Association and co-chair of the National Indian Gaming Association during a pivotal time in the 1990s, when he successfully fought for the right to offer casino gaming on sovereign land. Though these efforts, Daniel was instrumental in ensuring self-sufficiency of his tribal nation and many others throughout the, throughout the country. Daniel always cared deeply about the future of his people and, and inspired many others to become involved in tribal governance through his guidance, generosity and leadership. To his family and friends, Daniel was a source of constant love and support, always ready to help, to listen and to encourage everyone around him. In East County or Alpine, where I live, we knew him as Danny. He frequently was seen at any event that was going on locally. Uh, he was always very, very supportive of, of, of the Quanians in Alpine and all the other organizations. He was also an amazing singer and loved to perform karaoke at his home or, uh, with touring acts at the Saquon Casino Resort. He was even the lead singer in the band Danny and the Marvells when he was young. Daniel Tucker, or our friend Danny, is survived by his beloved wife Lori, his daughters Deidra and Donna, Donda, his sibling Charlotte, uh, Leila May, Dolores and Willie, his grandchildren, Michaela, Michaela, I'm sorry, I'm having a tough day today, Natalia, Jordan Hudson and Hensley, and his great-grandchildren, Vesperland, Mirage and Scotty. He'll be deeply missed by all that knew him and his legacy will continue to inspire future generations to lead with integrity, passion and grace. We express our deepest sympathies at his passing and by this adjournment, memorize, memorialize him for our lifetime of contributions to Kumia Nation and to all of San Diego County and their residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next German in memory is presented by Superarz Jim Desmond for Raiden James Soriano.
Ah, the Bonzel Elementary School in our community are mourning eight-year-old Raiden James Sorino, who passed away on September 27th after an unexpected medical emergency. Raiden was a third grader known for his hu- Raiden was a third grader, known for his humor, his kindness, his love, and he is being hailed now as a local healer, I'm sorry, he's being hailed now as a local hero for giving the gift of life. He left an everlasting impact through organ donations, saving five lives, including a four-year-old girl in Colorado and an eight-year-old girl in Southern California. His father, Michael, described Raiden as a loving brother and a generous child who dreamed of becoming everything from a YouTuber to a paleontologist. The Bonzel School and the community have rallied around the Soriano family in support and remembrance, honoring Raiden's legacy of compassion and love. Through his time, though his time with us was very short, the world is brighter for having known him, and let us carry his spirit in our hearts. Our sincere condolences go out to Raiden's loving family, his friends, and the Bonzel community. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. It's about 4:25 now, are, is the team ready for closed session, David? Okay, let's give ourselves about a 15-minute break, so say 4:40, we'll go into closed session. You're at 5:00. Okay, we're giving ourselves a 10-minute break. So at 4:35, we'll go to closed session. Okay, thanks.
The board will now recess into closed session to consider those matters listed under item 19 on today's session agenda. If there are any reportable actions, they will be reported out during the land use session of this meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, November 5th, 2025.